Our Commissioner Tibbs has just walked in. Robin, what would you like to, would you like to do that first? Okay, we do have a special acknowledgement for service of our past Commissioner. Also, he's been the Chair of our Commission. Brian, I don't know how long that's been. And also, he's, he's served on the Planning Commission, so we are very grateful for his leadership, and always your knowledge and your professional credibility. And we do have, as a Commission, have an acknowledgement for you if you would like to come up. Okay, good. Oh, wait, wait, wait. Let me take these glasses off.
Are you ready?
Here you go. Hold this, Commissioner.
One, two, three. And let me get one more just to be safe. And I got it. Thank you.
Could you tell I was sticking my tongue out?
Do you have any wise words for us?
Let's see. Let's see here. For each case, there, no. I'm so used, so used to reading this, but, no, it was, it was great to serve and it's, it's nice to be here for a minute, but definitely appreciate this group. This group does a lot of work, so I miss you guys, but I hear great things, so. Until next time.
We have another Commissioner. However, we will move forward and if our Commissioner comes in, we will take a little short break. Okay? I'll wait till Commissioner gets in place. Are you good? You're good? Okay. We'll just go ahead and do our, our preambles for the meeting. For each case, there will be a public mirroring, meeting, hearing, excuse me. We ask that the applicant keep their presentation to under 10 minutes. They may reserve two minutes as a rebuttal. We ask that the public keep their comments to two minutes unless they have previously requested in writing for five minutes as a representative of a group or organization. Pursuant to the provision of Section 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws, notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this Commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County vis statutory writ of certiorari. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the Commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the Commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. So, Robin, do we have changes to our agenda? Oh, should we do the others first? Adoption of minutes first?
Yes.
Okay. Also, just remind our Commissioners to just push the button once on your, on your microphones. Okay, our adoption and approval of the minutes of July 21, 2021. Is there, are there any questions or is there a motion to move approval?
Madam Chairman, I move for approval.
Okay, there is a motion by the Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Johnson has seconded. All in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
And, or, or I. None opposed, so the motion passes. Okay, the adoption of the agenda is next, and Robin has some comments.
Yes, we've got quite a few changes. 1226 Avenue North is removed from the agenda altogether. They made some changes that equal to an admin permit. And 515 Madison, which is also a Fifth Avenue address, they're removed from the agenda altogether. I think you'll see a new application from them. 308310 Broadway has requested a deferral. 1417 Russell has requested a deferral. 1021 Russell and 120 South 11th, it's confusing on the agenda. It's the same project, same property, and that is, will be under new business rather than consent. And 119121 Third Avenue South, there's a request to move it to the public hearing, so it's moved from consent. So that'll leave us, I think, two items on consent. And the applicant for 105 Broadway has requested to be moved to the end of the agenda.
Okay, thank you, Robin. Commissioners, do you have any questions on any of these, either that or a motion?
Madam Chairman, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Mayhull. First and a second, all in favor? Okay, any opposed? None, so the motion carries. Okay.
The changes to the agenda leave two items on consent. Those are 1602 Shelby Avenue, it's an application to construct an addition, and 1502 Paris Avenue, that is an application to construct an outbuilding that is a detached accessory dwelling unit. Staff has reviewed these applications and find that they meet the applicable conditions, or meet the design guidelines for their respective districts with applicable, applicable conditions as outlined in the staff recommendations.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Any questions, Commissioners? Okay, all right. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, Commissioner Mayhull makes it first.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Price, all in favor of the motion? None opposed, so the motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Our first project is?
This is for a new landmark. If someone would mind advancing just one slide to the pictures, thanks. Councilmember Van Reese requests historic landmark for the property at 435 Old Hickory.
Robin, just a second. So Ms. Ladonna is here?
Oh, great.
So we can do that before. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. So here is another Commissioner, Ladonna Boyd, and she has also served on our zoning commission, and we are so grateful that she took the time and also has had time to, to give her professional and all her knowledge for us, and we have really appreciated your service, and we thank you for what you do for the city as well. So we have a small token, and we can...
All right, well, good afternoon, everyone. It's good to see all of you again. It's, you know, certainly feels like home sitting right here again. This is my usual spot. So good afternoon to everyone. I'm sorry, running behind. It is pouring down outside, as you can imagine, right now, but it was certainly an honor and a pleasure to serve on this Commission with all of you, and thank you for your dedication to what you do for the city and to the staff. I know your job's not getting any easier, so I certainly commend you for what you do, and thank you to everyone, and I wish you all the success. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much to Commissioner Boyd and Commissioner Tibbs. Again, that's not, words are not enough, so, thank you. Okay, Robin, thank you for...
Okay, so to 435 Old Hickory, which is also, has two addresses, 91 Donna Drive, Councilmember Van Reese requests historic landmark for the property. The Nichols Sadler House is significant for its association with Mr. Sadler, who influenced the development of Commercial Madison and is a prime example of the Neoclassical Revival style, and so meets Section 17.36120B, 2 and 3 of the ordinance, qualifying it to be historic landmark. The house, garage, and pool were all constructed in 1945, likely by the Nichols family, and then the Sadler family owned the property from 1961 to 2017. Harry Sadler moved his auto dealership from Goodlettsville to Madison, and in 1958, Governor Clement appointed him to the Tennessee Motor Vehicle Commission, and he was very active in politics and numerous civic organizations until his death in 1987. Staff suggests that the Commission recommend approval of 435 Old Hickory as historic landmark, finding the property meets Section 17.36120B, 2 and 3, and we recommend the adoption of the existing historic landmark guidelines to this property, finding that they are consistent with the Secretary of Interior standards.
Okay, Robin, that's the end of the presentation for the moment. Okay, Commissioners, any comments? All right, we do a public hearing, or do we do that as well? Okay. Always forget that sometimes. Okay, yes, we're open, public hearing. Is, is there anyone else that would like to comment on this beautiful preservation? Okay, closed public hearing? So I want to date myself a little bit, but I do remember Harry Sadler Auto at Rivlegate, and my parents bought their first car from there, and it was a Chevy Chevelle. So I do remember that, and the development in Rivagate and Madison has been overwhelming, but it is very worthy. I do know this house. I've passed it a lot, and it does have some really beautiful neoclassic detailing, and it's so nice to have a, a piece of property that's been preserved like that, in interior and exterior, so it's been very, very credible.
Madam Chairman, I too am glad to see this preserved as a historic landmark and a move that with respect to 435 Old Hickory, 91 Donna Drive, that we recommend approval of the historic landmark application.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Anyone else?
Second, the motion.
Dr. Lee, thank you. There's a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay, I don't think any is opposed, are opposed, who is opposed, and so the motion passes. Thank you very much. Nice presentation, and we will publicly thank Councilmember Van Reese for bringing us this really great project.
Next on our agenda is a historic landmark for signage. This is a new type of overlay, so we have, as you well know, we have multiple types of historic overlays. There's historic preservation, there's neighborhood conservation, several different types of landmarks. So this one would enable us to landmark just the sign in a situation where maybe the building really isn't worth keeping, or maybe isn't even there anymore, but the sign still is. The draft design guidelines are based on the Secretary of Interior standards, so they meet the ordinance. SAS suggests a recommendation of the new type of overlay and recommends adoption of the design guidelines proposed, finding they are consistent with the standards. And the, you've had a chance to look at the guidelines, they are pretty general, and that's on purpose, so that we can really address each unique situation that, that we may not even contemplate right now, especially when you're dealing with signage that's not, that no longer has a building associated with it. The Councilmember, Councilmember Roberts thinks that she does have, or she does know she has, her first landmark that's ready to go if it should be passed, and that's in the Nation's, the Nation's Bar and Grill. It's sort of a Googie-style sign.
Very good. Thank you, Robin. So we will hear from the public if you have any comments. All right, we will close public hearing. Commissioners?
Robin, just a quick question, and perhaps, I think this limits it, but in terms of just the definition of what qualifies as a sign, obviously it would be unoccupied. It's, is, is, do you feel like there's enough, there are enough constraints around this that would help, help us as a Commission and help you as a staff to define what is and what isn't a sign? Things that are painted on buildings would obviously carry with them a very different preservation standard than would be something that's freestanding or purely by its size. It's, you know, it's, it's, I can think of the bright electric sign, for example. That, that one purely maybe on size, not necessarily designed, would be something that comes to mind that I'm curious if it's broad enough or specific enough that staff feels comfortable that this is, won't create problems for you in the future.
Yes, we did feel comfortable with it, and it does, it does allow for a really broad range, so it could be a painted sign or mural. It could be a pole sign, wall sign, ghost signage. It can be a lot of different things, but then there are other qualifiers. You know, it needs to be historic, it needs to be more than 50 years old, and things like that.
I'm happy to see this added as a new tool that we can use for preservation in Nashville. I can think of several great signs that I pass by regularly that would love to see landmarked, so I supported it. If there are no other comments, I'd go ahead and suggest that we move for approval for the historic landmark signage.
Good. Okay.
I will second that, but with a question to staff as well. So as far as the, the adoption of this, I understand the design guidelines and the tool that we have, but how does it apply to individual signs? Is that the owner that would apply for protection of that particular sign, or is that, how does that work out?
Yes, it's like any other type of overlay, it would really need owner's support for it to pass council.
Okay.
Madam Chair, do we have a public hearing on this?
Say again, Commissioner?
I know we've got a motion on the floor. Did we open the public hearing on this issue?
Yes, we did already. Thank you, sir. No worries. It's good to be reminded. Okay, so there is a motion, there is a second, and all in favor, other than any other comments. Nope, good. Yes, approve it or, or not, so, yeah. I made the motion. All right. We'll get together yet. All right, there's none opposed, so the motion passes for this recommendation to council on this. And, yeah, so I think we're good. Okay, thank you. Can you hear me now? Okay, thank you. So 1012 Mansfield Avenue is in the Matual Heights Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay District. Back in January of 2020, a permit was issued to replace a rear dormer on an existing addition and to replace the siding on the existing addition. Upon inspection, it was found that faux-grain siding was installed in the building. The structure was permitted to have fiber-sement board siding. The notes within the permit stated that the siding should have a smooth face. This is required under Guideline 4B, which also states that wood-grain siding is not appropriate. The windows on the addition have also been replaced. The project was originally approved to have double-hunged windows. The windows that have been installed are six-over-six, double-hunged with interior grills. This is, this does not meet Section 4C of the guidelines. Staff recommends disapproval of the new windows and, and on siding on 1012 Mansfield Avenue, finding that materials do not meet Section 4B and 4C of the guidelines. Staff recommends that the new, that new windows and siding, excuse me. Staff finds that the new windows and siding be removed and replaced with compatible materials within 60 days of the Commission's decision. Thank you, Kelly. Is the applicant here?
Good afternoon. I'm Dan Collarin, the owner of 1012 Mansfield. Have a few comments, but interesting, the car you saw in there, you talked about the Sadler residence before, was bought at Sadler Pontiac, January 1, 1969.
All right.
And it's going to stay at its home from when the Harpers had this property, so, kind of interesting. Anyway, so, yeah, real quick on this, this property, as, as mentioned, purchased at the end of 19, started, or hoped to start in January 2020, went through a contractor, didn't work, got another one, you know, with the time and COVID challenges. In terms of the windows and starting, you know, the rest of the home, and this is a home that we're, we are building to live in or renovating, so we're doing, it's not a flip or an investment, and we're spending a lot of time and a lot of money going, you know, historic and doing it right on this property. So, you know, first of all, on, on the windows, my understanding, again, even at the time, finding windows was next to impossible, whether that factor's in or not, but I would propose, you know, on the exterior grid, if we were to have those installed on the windows, to be able to keep those. As mentioned in here, I'm not sure if mentioned at the podium, but this is just the back-facing part of the house. The other three sides are original. So I would, I would propose from, from that standpoint, I've looked at the windows and the contractor, and we can install the exterior grid. My understanding is if there's exterior and interior grid, and with those reveals, that that would meet the requirement. With regard to the siding, again, no idea that there was an issue with this, the original siding that was on this back part. It was a vinyl with a wood grain on it, and even when it came time for this and to have the siding installed, you know, asked by the contractor, do you want the wood or the smooth? I looked on the permit, and again, must have misinterpreted, but where it says, you know, Shelby wood or smooth-faced, you know, I thought either was an option. Was not, again, trying to really keep things as they were, but, I mean, a proposal to rip off all the siding, new siding on, obviously that would be a challenge, so. That's, that's, yeah, I mean, that's, that's really where we're at on it. Like I said, it's, it's been a, a big project. I think if anybody would have seen this property, arguably probably the ugliest, nastiest property in the area, there were six 40-yard open tops of trash from inside and outside the house taken out, so. Anyway, we're proud of what we're doing, but I understand where we fall within the guidelines here. It's just, you know, to, to go backwards would be, would be a challenge. And ask for consideration.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that it?
Thank you, applicant, for a moment, yes. Okay, we're open, public hearing. Anyone here to have any comments on this particular project? If not, we will close public hearing. Commissioners?
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
May I ask a question to the applicant?
Commissioner.
Applicant, if you...
Yes.
So looking at the property history, you know, prior to your purchase, the property was held in somewhat an investment company, but your intent was to live in that property, or are you intent to remodel and sell it?
No, this is, this is my home, our home. What happened, I found it off-market through an investor. My wife actually put a ad on Facebook, you know, we're looking for a home in that area. So an investor called and said, hey, I'm doing this house, and he does a lot of homes. And, because he was buying it off-market from the family, and so we did a, a deal with him. But how they, how it transacted, it was almost simultaneous, you know, where he bought it, we bought it from him. But that's not us. That's a different gentleman. And so, you know, it was, it was, we're not an investor or a flipper, like I said. That's, that's our home. That car hadn't run since '87. I got that set for the house, so we're going to live there. So it's also why we're doing not just lipstick on it. I mean, we are doing it right and putting a lot of money, you know, into this property to do it right.
Thank you. One additional question is, after you purchased, the remodeling permit was pulled. So since this is a historic zoning, on the permit, in everywhere, it says condition, and especially, you know, a circle in red, not to use those grained siding. It was everywhere, and also window before the purchase, it was conditioned to consult our historic zoning staff. It was in everywhere on the permit, so how would it miss? Or is it, just didn't pay any attention? How, how is it possibly happen?
Well, that, that, that would be a question for my contractor as well. I understand, I understand the question, but I don't have your answer on that. You know, I did, I had him do the, submit the plan, submit for the permit. Like I said, I had an initial contractor who just took some money and disappeared. Scramble, I mean, you don't need to hear the sad story about all that, but...
So you're saying you cannot find the contractor?
Oh, no, no, no. I got a new contractor.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, five, six months later, you know, design group is who we have now, so. But in terms of, you know, so obviously, I'm relying on them at the same time.
Thank you.
Yep.
Answer my question.
Yeah. Have you discussed with your contractor about having them do the replacement? Yeah.
Yeah, we, we have, but I don't know that we would reach resolution on that.
Yeah, those sort of situations come before us more often, and it is behoove to, you know, it's good for public to hear our questions as well, as so that other applicants can be aware that they really need to look at their permit and need to look at what the requirements are and to work with staff. And it does behoove your contractor to, unfortunately, that you have to work with them on that. Okay, thank you. Commissioners?
Are we deliberating now? Yeah. Okay. I think these violations are so difficult to see sometimes, because I understand how there can be a disconnect and things can slip through the cracks between, you know, communication between owners and contractors. Unfortunately, it's part of the guidelines, and we've had to, you know, in the past, when similar cases have come up before us, we've required that the siding be replaced, and it's, we have to look at it, at the project and just not the individual circumstances, but kind of take the, the integrity of the project in, to consideration. And I guess it's, it's painful for me to see owners go through this, but my, unfortunately, I feel like we have to, I agree with the staff recommendation about the windows and the siding on this, and don't really see how we can, can go another way on it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else?
I agree with Commissioner Fitz. I just, while we don't wake up as a Commission hoping to have people, you know, tear down work they've done, you know, whether it's a miscommunication or any other issue, you know, it has been coming before us more and more frequently, these types of things that are already built. And, you know, why even have drawings if, that we're approving if they're not going to be built per the drawings? Which, if you look in our packet, the, you know, completely different window locations, completely different siding, so it's called out, so it's just, you know, why even give us drawings if we're not going to build those? So that's, that's my thought on it, and therefore I'm in agreement with staff and Commissioner Fitz. Fitz.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So I'll go ahead regarding ten twelve Mansfield Avenue. I, uh, vote, make a motion to, uh, disapprove the new windows and siding, um, and therefore follow, um, staff recommendation for, um, fixing it.
Okay. And also with the timeline, Commissioner? Sixty days of the commission's decision? Just wanted to clarify that so we do have a really clear timeline.
Yeah, uh, I mean...
Or do you have other thoughts on that?
I, I don't know that a hundred and twenty days would hurt us given the current, current market conditions.
I would say that would be amenable, uh, so with a hundred and twenty days due to the current market.
Okay. Is, there's a motion, is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner. Right, all in favor of that motion? Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you applicant.
Since sixteen oh nine Douglas Avenue, it's a non-contributing house located in Eastwood Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay on June eleventh, twenty twenty-one, administrative permit was issued for a two-story rear addition that was to be no taller than existing building. The permit also included an uncovered rear porch. Inspection the property in late July found that the home had exceeded the scope of the permit. The overall, the old footprint of the addition is larger than what was permitted and the addition is significantly taller than the existing building. A front door was also constructed, but was not previously requested. Staff has requested app, as-built, but the, but they have not been provided at the time of this presentation. Staff is willing to work with the applicant to address the concerns raised in this project, but we require additional information about the current addition and about any proposed works such as rear deck. So this information includes as-built drawings and information about proposed materials. This will allow us to better understand the size and scale of the structure as well as the new and proposed setbacks and the structure's relationship to surrounding buildings. Lack of this, we cannot provide additional guidance on how to proceed as constructed. At this time, staff recommends disapproval of the addition at sixteen oh nine Douglas, finding that the project does not meet section four for materials and section six for addition. Staff recommends that permit HGP twenty twenty-one oh three six nine ten be rescinded and that addition be removed within sixty days.
Okay, thank you Kelly. Is the applicant here? Thank you. Go ahead and we'll just pass that along. We'll just, go ahead and make your presentation.
Okay. Good afternoon, my name is Dr. Shanika LaShay Gregory. I am pro-owner at sixteen oh nine Douglas Avenue. When we begin to, we, well, last year in August, my mom, my granny and my auntie passed, they all lived in this home and my dad. Uh, me and my kids lived there also. So when my mom, before my mom passed, she told me, if anything happens to me and your dad, I need you to make sure that you invest in this home. I needed to stay a family home. So, beginning on May twenty-fourth, look, maybe a little earlier than that, uh, my contractor, he let me know that, um, my house was in the historical area, so we needed to talk to the historical people. He had began to communicate amongst about forty, um, emails between the, um, historical indivi- um, commissions and on May the twenty-fifth, an email was sent from the commission not, that my house was a non-historical building, so alterations can happen to this building that may not be appropriate for the historical building. The only thing that they said is make sure that my house had character of, to be sure that my house was a characteristics of the neighborhood. On five twenty-eight, we scheduled a meeting so that we could meet with the commissioner at the historical, um, house or whatever, wherever they are, out south. At that time, um, we were, it was re- it was recommendation that because my home was not historical, from the eye view of, um, the eye view of the street, that we put a dormer there, um, so it won't look like we have a two stories home on the side, just like houses in my area. She explained the characteristics of the dormer and so that make sure that we had an eye view and that it didn't look like a second, um, a two stories home from this, from the front. On six ten, a day before repro- approval, the question was asked by the commissioner, um, will there be any change to the existing house height or roof? My contractor respond, not at this time, just a rear addition right now. He needed, he needed a better understa- no, she's, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, um, not at this time, just a rear addition, um, right now. So what that meant was, um, my mom's house and just two houses on the, on that block are like really little, the smallest house on the block, especially that we have, you know, we have this new area and we have a lot of people building. So it would have been impossible to build a second floor if you look at those sheets, um, as small as my mom's house was. On eight three, she already mentioned that, um, so my, my, my thing is, um, we was told that my house was not historical and that we didn't have to follow the historical, um, the hi- whatever the rules are with historical, just make sure we did the dormitory and that she requested that we add more windows. That, that was what, one of the statements that was made, um, on six ten. Just, uh, be, be sure that we add more windows because we didn't have a lot of windows on the original one. So make sure that they didn't meet it. They didn't give us no type of windows, they didn't say that. And so when they began to start building a house, my, because my mom's house so small, they had to go up some because, um, they didn't want to put pressure on her house and then it all falls down. So at that point, I just want to make this thing, what makes my house different? It is no, it's not a mass, um, a, a project. The only difference of this, the sixteen oh nine is that we are one of the, um, fewest, yeah, we're original residents that still live there. Um, also, we're one of the black, um, of the five that's there and all the houses around us, that's what makes us different, the, the color of the people who live there. This is not a Airbnb, my house is built for a family, I have six kids and my dad, so I had to make sure that we accommodate that. Um, my home is not historical. My house is one house on a lot, it's not two and three houses which surrounds us, my house looks nothing like that. If you look in the package, you'll see that my house resemble half of the, all the houses in there which are different size, shapes, in colors. What I have an issue is, um, code tip came out, the first time we got a stop work order, he came out three hours later and we told us and my contractor that his supervisor told him to remove that because nothing was wrong with my house. They all, we were in, we were within the twenty setback, um, the five on the side, we actually was way, we, we're nowhere near it, we still got a big backyard. So, um, with that, then, um, he told, he told my contractor basically that, um, it was just somebody complaining in the neighborhood and that happens all the time. Okay? So then, so a week later, we get another stop work order and it says, call the historical people. The issue that I have and what I'm recommending is that I want to be able to come home. My kids are comfortable, living in a comfortable home, when my sons come from college, they have somewhere to sleep. And so with that being said, um, my mom's, I want to honor my mom. She asked me to take care of her home and that's all we're doing. So with, um, when I come out my door, the issue I have is right across the street, the house looks just like mine and it's in their packet. Next door to me, the house looks just like mine. If you count the, the thirteen houses from Douglas to Scott, there are eight houses that look just like mine in height. So I don't see what the deal, we're not, I'm not a historical home and she made it clear when we began this process on May the twenty, May the twenty-fourth, that we, we could, um, have some alterations, um, can happen because my home is not historical. So I'll let my contractor begin to speak.
Is some, who's tracking? If you would come to the podium, sir, and also give us, give us your name, please.
My name is Evangeline Johnson, I'm with Shawma Construction Group and CNO Construction. I've been building houses for twenty-five years. I also have built several houses in the, in the historical overlay, thousand and two Maxwell, so I understand the system, I understand what you're supposed to have and I'm very detailed when I build a house. I've been building houses for over twenty-five years and I do custom homes. So we was not told, the first thing is that the house was not historical. So if it's not historical, so me as a contractor, if it was, I would have went through the guidelines of the section four addition and the section four material. We haven't even gathered too much of material. They didn't tell us about pearly windows, they didn't tell us about those things that I've seen that put for me as I built before. So that's why the house is like it is. As she was speaking about the, the structure of the house, it's so small that when you start putting the roof line, you couldn't make it work. So if the inspector wanted to come by and see that, they would have saw that before we got to the complaint. You know, someone complained that we've been a massive unit. It's not Airbnb, it's a house for her, you know, trying to, um, I don't know, with her family, trying to improve the lifestyle of her family. But like I said, my third one is no code violation. Our setbacks, you can see in my site plan, we're well beyond our setbacks, so we don't have any violation of codes. They've been out there approved, so, and, uh, like I said, I was kind of surprised with the recommendation for the staff that we had to take a house down in, in sixty days and I was really surprised that because they said they were going to work with us. If you're going to work with us, taking a house down is not working with us. That's starting over, I can just pull another permit and do that. So again, I just want to say that, um, that's basically it. We appreciate the time and then hopefully we get a, a good approval.
Okay. Thank you applicant. Open for public hearing?
Hi everyone, uh, good afternoon, my name is Julie Hagan. I am the owner and I live in, uh, sixteen oh seven B, which if you look on page seven of the handout, I'm the bedroom overlooking the construction zone. I just kind of have a couple of words about the Gregory family. I mean, Dr. Gregory is a dean of a local school. She's correct, she has six children living in what we have called a tiny home that can't be built upon. Um, and for those reasons, this, this extension is just really important to not only their family, but I think to the community on Douglas Ave. They make a positive impact as people. But outside of that, uh, extending the, the home, what's kind of a request of her mother, who's very kind. And I just think, you know, I'm not well-versed in codes, but as a neighbor, I'm here today to say, I think I have the best view of the house. It is an extreme improvement from the previous living conditions and if that's something that you take into consideration, I hope you, uh, take my word for that, because as neighbors, I think we come five strong today to tell you that we support this and we hope that you guys will let them keep building. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Grace Renshaw. I own the house at sixteen oh seven A Douglas, next door to sixteen oh nine and live at two twenty Mockingbird in Cherokee Park. I ask that you disapprove the staff recommendation and allow the construction at sixteen oh nine Douglas to remain. Six years ago, we bought our house at sixteen oh seven to rent to our daughter. We chose this neighborhood because it was stable and integrated with longtime homeowners whom a friend living in the same block vouched for as good neighbors. This is the future Nashville we chose to invest in long-term. Conservation zoning should be about more than strict adherence to guidelines, it should focus on preserving the fabric of the neighborhood. The construction at sixteen oh nine Douglas reflects a positive investment and a commitment that our neighbors of six years, whose presence in their home dates back many years, are building their future long-term next door to us. In Cherokee Park, I've observed that conservation zoning guidelines are enforced in an extremely arbitrary and capricious manner that is too often applied as either a straitjacket or the rules are bent into pretzels to accommodate construction. The renovations our neighbors at sixteen oh nine are completing at their current size and scale are congruent with the duplex we own right next door. How is it that a home the size and scale of our house, both sides of which are owned by white people, is acceptable under CZ guidelines while the construction next door, similar in size and scale, is not? The staff recommendation reflects an arbitrary and capricious application of guidelines that is directly contradicted by our new construction right next door. The financial hit our neighbors will take is far greater than justified by any perceived negative impact on our conservation zone. We think the impact is positive. We wholeheartedly support our neighbors renovation and ask that you disapprove the staff recommendation and let this renovation project stand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Melinda Morsy and I live across the street at sixteen oh eight Douglas. We moved into the neighborhood three years ago, um, moving up here from Murphysboro. We chose this street, this house, for the exact same reason that Grace just mentioned, is that it was an integrated neighborhood, we had people there that were some original owners and we actually chose that on purpose. I'm a real estate agent and one of the things, and I sell a lot up in East Nashville and I sell a lot in suburbs. I've lived in suburbs and I choose not to now and part of the thing that I think makes East Nashville and this area so important is that we are trying to preserve some idea that gentrification will not take over. We see it all the time. We need, and in the historical, I understand y'all were just looking at a small perimeter of guidelines, but we have to look at this as an overall effect of our city and how people live. This family is a wonderful part of our community and one of the reasons we actually chose this property. Um, when I look at this and I have sold houses, in fact, I just got three under contract last week in East Nashville, all of them had had additions. All of the additions were as large as this. You look down our street and in the packets, you see, there are additions on there with dormers almost exactly like that down towards the park. And then there's the one on the corner of Scott and Douglas that is also a very large structure that was completely redone with a two-story thing with a large dormer in the front. I think that they were not given the correct guidelines on the start of this. I think this is a family that is trying to do everything right. I think that what y'all are doing is cost prohibitive, impunitive, and I ask y'all to not approve it and I ask you to let them finish this. We, we love this neighborhood, it's going to be beautiful when it's finished. It's going to be what we want in this neighborhood and I'm, I'm so proud of them for doing it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jake Morgan, I'm here with Julie, Melinda, Randy, Grace to support Dr. Gregory. Uh, I rent the, the house at sixteen oh seven A Douglas. Uh, I'm dating Randy and Grace's daughter Kelsey and have been for the last year and just the way this neighborhood has accepted me in the last year has just made me feel so proud to be a part of the community in East Nashville. And when I look at our neighbors here and what they're building, they take so much pride in their home too and so much pride in our neighborhood. So I am just here to ask that you let the renovation stand.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Randy Horick, I'm the owner of sixteen oh seven A Douglas Avenue. I've lived, I've owned that property for six or seven years. I was delighted when I saw the addition going up at sixteen oh nine Douglas. I was excited because this is a family that's been part of the neighborhood for a long time, was building, was obviously committed to the neighborhood and I have watched with some dismay as families have moved out, as new buildings have gone up in the neighborhood. I watched people stopping on the street and talking to Dr. Gregory, obviously, about how excited they were to see the building going up. And then it was with my utter horror and dismay when I learned about the stop work order, about the draconian and short-sighted recommendation of your staff on this project. Because what I believe has happened here is that once again, this staff has missed the forest for the trees. The trees that I saw in the report was that the dormer wasn't placed correctly on the roof, that the second story was too high relative to the first story and that the project was too tall and too big overall. The forest that you all missed on this is that, as other people had pointed out, the size of this project is no bigger than the size of the duplexes that you have allowed on this street. It actually fits in and complements what's there now. It is not out of character of the neighborhood, as the report says. The duplexes and the big houses that you allowed were what was out of character with the neighborhood. the neighborhood. And if anything, this project brings this house more to what the neighborhood looks like. The other, the forest that you have missed is that this is a pattern that repeats itself all over town. I'm not sure that you were aware, but my council member in West Nashville, Kathleen Murphy, wrote a letter to your executive director last year saying that she would no longer recommend neighborhoods in her district pursue conservation zoning because they had had precisely this kind of problem with the staff of missing the forest for the trees.
Thank you, sir. Make your closing.
You let the white developers build monster truck houses, and you hem in this family.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay. The applicant, does the applicant have any time for rebuttal? Sure. Okay. Applicant, you have probably, what, two minutes for rebuttal to the public comment, or if you have any other. Since the public made their comment, you have that option.
As my neighbors have suggested, what I feel, and it is true, as a little girl, this house, my mom lived here for 43 years. I lived, this is my home. I went to school there. I actually now teach, been teaching for over 17 years around my neighborhood to the same people. What I don't understand is, how can, when we had the little house on the prairie and everything was shot up and it was approved, and here we are, we're not even a historical home? And I start building a home for my kids to invest long term, and then I get a stop-work order because somebody decided to call in that I had a massive project taking place. As you heard my neighbors, their houses are just like mine. As you look in the, and these are all historical homes, and my house doesn't look like nobody. I did what I was told. I added the extra windows. I added the dormitory, as we was told during our meeting face-to-face with the commission. I did all that I was asked to do. And now, because somebody chose, and I wish that somebody was here to say that I had a massive home project being built, I just don't understand how they can complain. And we never complained, my mama and daddy never complained for 43 years. In the last 10 years, we didn't complain about nothing being built over us, taller than us. I used to concede apartments across the street, which is behind the house across the street. Can't even see that. All the pretty views, pretty views that we used to have, all the playgrounds we had as kids, kids can't even be kids because we have these other projects, but yet I try to do this, and then it's a big deal. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Dr. Gregory. Okay, we're closed public hearing. Commissioners?
I'd just like, I'll just start off, just, you know, there were a lot of issues brought up by a lot of members of the community, and just to restate a few facts, you know, we are stewards of these overlays that are enacted by communities, and getting into every single family story can't be our purview. The facts that I keep coming back to, that, please correct me if I'm wrong, anyone, there were design documents and drawings submitted to our commission that were approved. Correct. They were not built to that, and therefore, any sort of, again, we're still having a discussion, but giving just carte blanche, we don't have current shop drawing, we don't have current as-bills of what has been built that we know of.
Sir, we, public hearing is closed. Please respect that. Please respect that. Our commission is under discussion.
Well, I mean, I asked them, like, I'm sorry, what documents are you referring to?
Those drawings that were required, I had to pay $8,000 to get those blueprints because those are actual of the house that came out and did the measurement.
This today?
It shows what it is right now. And it also showed that she had some part of the house that was already falling down. The reason why it looked like it's bigger than what it is, some of the property was already falling apart. I showed the pictures and all that.
Okay.
So it make it look like it's larger, while I showed the shade, it shows that that part was part of the existing part of the house we look at.
Okay, thank you. That's, yeah. Again, this just wasn't in our packet previous to the meeting, so good information.
We haven't seen them yet. That's why you haven't.
Pardon?
This is the first we've seen them.
Yes, correct. So I just, you know, I don't know how as a commissioner we want to handle this and discuss this, but it's just, you know, giving someone just carte blanche to, again, build something that is not what was approved is just dicey territory for me to wade into.
And I have a question for the applicant, and, you know, there was, it looked like there was a building permit that was officially issued with a set of plans attached to that in June. And what we're seeing is totally different than what the approved plans and the permit was based on. How did you get from what was approved to what you ultimately wound up building?
What happened is that the house was...
Please speak in the mic, sir.
The house was an 18 by 27. What happened was that the small house, the dynamic of the small house and the 20-some, nine by, I think it's nine by 15, is part of it, but you never, when we submitted to codes, we didn't know we were going to have to take that down. So when you see it, you don't see that that 18 by, it's only 20 by 30, you're only talking about five feet because that feet was in here. If you look at the shady part, it shows that that was already existing. And what happened here, that was falling down. As we start building, it started collapsing on us. And what we had to do is take that down so it never would put on the permit because we didn't know we was going to have to take it down. We thought we were going, so we only talking about two or three feet that from the original.
But as a contractor, you're used to getting building permits, you're used to working in historic zoning. Did you not think that when you changed the overall design that you wouldn't have to go back to the city to get, you know, a revised permit?
But no, 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 because the codes come out and inspect. I didn't, the way she explained it to me, I went to the meeting. If she had told me that I had to abide by the section material, section addition, then it would have dawned on me. But we was not told that. So that's why, as you build a house, you don't just put a house up and it's going to fall. So if she had told me that we was, had to fall up under those guidelines, then I would have addressed it at that time. You know, so she never told, so we just built the house structurally sound, and it's hard to build a house when you got a house that's so small and they didn't want us to go up. They told us that we had to not build a house. The original plan was we were just going straight up. So when I start structurally building, we couldn't do that. So if I knew that I had to go before you are, I mean, the inspector, I would have called them on the phone like I did at 1002 Maxwell. Listen, I need you to come out here and review this. But if you don't tell me that, I didn't think, because we wasn't in a historical house, so we didn't have to go by those guidelines. But if you tell me that, I'm very detailed, or I would have made sure that could I be a custom home, 7,000, commercial building, gas station, I would have called the historian and said, listen, you need to come out here and look at it. I didn't even think they was coming out. The way it was approached to me, I didn't think, I just thought codes came out. Codes came out, approved, our setbacks was good, everything is fine, enforce the structure of the house. If I knew there was going to be a problem, I would have called them out and said, look at it. We can't build it structurally because it's too small.
So I would recommend that in the future that you carefully read the permit because the permit does talk about changes that occurred during the course of instruction.
So I guess for me, if I'm, if we go and we meet the commission...
Ma'am...
Do I not have the...
We close public hearing, and if the commission asks you a specific question, we will be happy to hear you. And until then, and our commissioners have asked, so give us just a moment. We will continue to work with this, okay? So please be patient with us as well. Vice Chair, are you clear on your... Okay.
Yes, I think what the vice chair is getting at is absolutely correct. With administrative permits to build new construction, even on a non-contributing house in a conservation zoning overlay, there is a permit with very specific language and plans attached to it that is what you are being permitted to build. If you stray from that and our staff sees that that's not been built, then you will, anybody in the public will be called before us for a show cause hearing. This is not singling out anybody or any part of town. It's just how our process works. Some of the public comment that we're being arbitrary and capricious in this, I find outrageous and incorrect, and the public, other people need to know how our process works. It's very clear, when you have a specific permit issued by the Historic Zoning Commission, it is provided to the contractor or, and/or the property owner to build as proposed. So I also think that the staff has given, is not, the recommendation is not to remove the building, the structure as built. It is to submit the drawings that have been submitted to us today at the last minute for, to work with you and to see if there's a workable solution to this.
Okay.
That is exactly what it says.
There is, there is a recommendation to remove the addition that was constructed because we had not received these drawings, and so we could not make a more specific recommendation on how it should be.
Okay, I apologize. I'm incorrect there. Further down in the staff report, it does seem to give the option of providing some drawings to see if maybe there's something that can be worked out. So I believe that's all I have to say for right now.
Okay, Commissioner. Anyone, please. Commissioner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My grievance is, I do understand the applicant's situation, but following the historical permit and process, I think staff recommendation is precisely following our procedure. There's no arbitral and capricious, just specifically following the guideline, as well as permit, what submitted and what built was totally different. So there's, you know, simple fact. And I do know staff, any, you know, race does not play in our body. So that's a given. So having said that, you know, my grievance is, I wish the contractor would follow staff recommendation when it had just, just resubmit the document, stop-work order, so it would not have been further this along, and we could have remedied earlier. But having said that, because, you know, I do appreciate one comment about tree and forest. Of course, if we follow specific guideline, staff recommendation is on target, we should follow that. But I am now willing to look at the forest because, you know, this street, of course, sometimes, you know, tall and skinny, those coming in kind of trigger our neighborhood conservation. So I think this street, this neighborhood is not, you know, exception. So some street, or some, you know, three, four houses down, they do have monstrous, you know, tall and skinny. And compared to that, this historic house may be proportion. But, you know, we just received the, you know, drawing, so we do not have enough comparison to precisely say, yes, indeed, this house is not monstrous or, you know, out of character. So one thing, you know, it hits me is, yes, in the beginning with, this house is a non-contributing house. However, you know, in the practice, when we do some addition, try to make non-contributed house to in line with the historic character. So that's what, you know, our staff was trying to do. But because of the permit and, you know, stop-work order and so forth, it just kind of accelerated to come to this situation. But I, you know, having said that, I am inclined to see the forest because this is originally non-contributing house. So what would be the best solution? Because we don't want to be punitive. I mean, you know, I wish contractor would follow from the beginning, but understanding all the, you know, history and so forth, I would like to see the big picture, would like to see if is there any unworkable solution to that. So I'm interested here, other commissioners, on that point.
Thank you, Commissioner. One thing we'd also like to just remind our public, I know the, you know, we're hearing the neighbors and your comments, and it seems to be, you know, very passionate about your neighborhood, is Eastwood Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay is not by this commission. Your community establishes that, and it brings it to the council person, and then we follow those guidelines. These are not our guidelines. These are guidelines by your community and was worked hard on by a, you know, who knows how many hundreds of block captains, perhaps. You weren't approached by that. But that's where our charge is, and we are listening to you. We are a very, we listen to applicants, and please know that. But we do have a charge, and I think sometimes when we are really strong about how we see our guidelines is such. But we don't create these. They're by the Secretary of Interior Standards, and your community has said that. So talk to your council person or talk to your people who are your neighborhood association presidents or the board and have some input there as well. Commissioner?
Well, I'm so sorry that this has happened to you, and it's obvious you're a great neighbor and a great member of this community, and to have your neighbors come up and speak so passionately for you says a lot about you. I keep going back to, you know, the permit and the plans that were submitted with the permit and what was allowed, and it, that's what I'm struggling with, is why it was proposed to be built a certain way, and then it wasn't built that way. And you don't have a construction, you know, background on this, but this gentleman does. And so, I mean, did you, did you ever, did you see the permit? Did you submit the plans? Was it you that did that?
I submitted the plan, and I'm explaining to you all.
Could you just talk to your...
I'm explaining to you all that you actually not getting, the house is not as big as you think it is because what happened is, we still got the same footing that was there. It looked big because if we raise it up, it's not that bigger than what we submitted. And then we was told that we could put a dormer, but it's not on the plan. So that means somebody had to look at the plan and say, it need, I sent a picture. Yes, I sent a picture of the house that she lacked to the staff. This is how she want her house. It didn't have, it had a dormer on it. So to me, if it was a problem with the dormer, I got the email, I got 40 emails. It shows that dormer on there submitted to, and I'm not trying to point any finger, we here to make a solution. We ain't here to point fingers. We here to do, to get this approved and work with you. But I showed a picture of how she want her house to look like, the lady house down the street. So if that was an issue, that was a change in the plan, but nobody said anything. And the way the house is made, I couldn't, the foundation is the same, it's just that it had a part of the house that was falling down. So you looking at it like the house is bigger, larger on the permit than it really is, but the part, house was falling down. So you're not looking at the construction part of it. It still were going to be that size. I just had to, if you took the block, it's the same.
Go ahead, ask him your question.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. I'm the same.
Was the dormer in the original plans that you got a permit for?
We had three different drawings that we submitted, and she, and one of them had, she said, we couldn't do...
Who is she, by the way?
Ms. Robin.
Okay.
She said, we couldn't do that plan. Then I submitted another one.
Okay.
Okay, because you, then I submitted three different plans. Had three different, and one of them, it never had a dormer, but she told me that we could put a dormer on it. So if you changed it, I could have submitted plans that showed a dormer.
Okay, so the plans that were approved did not have a dormer?
It didn't have a dormer.
Is that right?
That's correct. But I sent an email saying that we wanted to look just like this house right here. And so what I'm saying is that I just don't, I understand that...
You sent that email, and then what was the response?
Okay, that's fine. The response was, yeah, because...
The permit isn't based on drawings or pictures of other houses. It's based on the drawings given to us. You can see here that there was no dormer added. We had a discussion about... We had a discussion about using that upper level space and you, Mr. Van Ull, may remember, I, I mentioned to you, it didn't look to me like there was enough space up there to be used. And you said, no, there definitely was. And I said, well, you might want to add a dormer. That would be helpful.
Exactly what you said.
But the dormer is not on the plans you gave us.
And, but we had already been through the previous. So I'm saying is, I'm not trying to point off, I'm just saying is that I, I did, I did the, the plant, the foot is almost identical, almost, it's just make it look bigger because some parts of existing house.
It sounds like that there, there is, there was a miscommunication.
That's what, and I understand.
And, and, and maybe you thought that, that because Robin said, well, you might want to think about a dormer, you didn't realize that you had to submit plans and get a permit.
And I can, and I can, and I can, and I can, I can say I missed it. I would say, I would put that on me that, that happened because it could have been a mishap that I didn't do that. I'm not gonna sit here and say I wasn't part of the, the problem. I'm also saying it was more, if all of us have to sit here and evaluate this and get this thing, not tear it down. You know what I'm saying? And I was also told that I have here, come here, I could have had these things in here yesterday, but you told me to bring them to you all. It was stated that I could bring them. So I understand you didn't have enough time to look. So don't, I don't think that I wasn't trying to get you the information that you need to make a educated or, you know, decision on it. So I ain't trying to hide anything. I'm just here trying to make sure we can, and not point any fingers. And it was a mishap and that just the way, you know, sometimes in construction is, we just got to make a way.
I hope, I hope you understand that there are tons of people that come to us with mishaps and they tear buildings down. I'm sorry, I get passionate about this. They tear buildings down. Well, that's a mishap. I didn't understand it. Well, I want to build this ten feet taller. Well, that's a mishap. I didn't understand the permit. And I'm sorry for that, that misunderstanding. It, it, it's just what I'm just, and I'm sorry for your situation here. I understand where you're coming from and what you're trying to get to. And, but we're not targeting any individual. We're just, we're just, like Chairman Bell said, we, we've got, it's submitted to us and, and the plans are approved and there's a permit and then somebody does something other than permanent, permit. And so we're not picking on you.
Not to cut you off, Mr. Elizabeth, I can go and redo a permit. So the permit is what's not, see what I'm saying is, I'm not, I can go and redo, I'm a contractor, I can go and resubmit a permit. And that, that's not a, the issue, I can go in and do that and you all review it and then we can come back to building because we're in this site, we're in the, you know, we're in the zone setback. So we not above there where we had to go there. I can go and just submit a new and get a new permit. I mean, that's not hard for us to do.
Okay, well, well, can we submit plans and can we defer this and submit plans and see if, if it meets with the conservation guidelines for the neighborhood and?
Let's get some more in, input from, yes, duly noted on that, Commissioner. Duly noted. Are there any other commissioners with, with other comments, please?
I think I'm gonna restate what most every commissioner said, but I want to try to be clear. How we work and the only way we're able to work because this is not a paid position, the staff does work in paid positions and overlays are approved, it's a set of rules, you submit a set of plans, the staff reviews them for compliance, we hear the case or it's administratively approved and a permit is given for that information. Not a permit plus email correspondence, plus a handshake agreement or any of those things. The only way we as a commission can evaluate things and the only way the staff can evaluate those things is in the communication between architects and contractors, which is drawings. And I challenge, and I, I appreciate the community appearing here to, to assist this owner and not have a negative outcome. But I would challenge anybody that's here today, given the pictures that are available and the plans that were approved and the permit, to tell me that those two things are congruent of the same. And I bristle at the implication that the staff somehow, or that we as a commission somehow are treating anything other than the facts in this case about what was presented and approved and what was built. So my recommendation to the applicant which you brought to us today is a set of plans that can be considered within the guidelines. And as a commission on the fly for us to take this new information, now that we've heard this case for going on fifteen, twenty minutes, thirty, and turn this over without the staff having, having a chance to look at it, is not something that we're in the business of doing. So my, those, those are, I think are indisputable facts in this case and that's what I'm relying on and nothing else. And I, I wanted to restate that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, I was just gonna add to that. I'm in agreement, what was submitted and what was built are two different things. I think at this point, since this was new information today, can we review this like it's a new application? I realize this has already been built, but can we review it and, and treat it as, treat it mentally as a new application? Would we have, have approved this and made, you know, you know, made an exception for a ridge raise for, you know, for this property? And, and so I think we have to look at it in that way, see if there's, and, and, or also look at it and see if there's a way it can be modified. Is there, are there things that can be done to bring it into compliance that don't, where we don't have to take the whole thing apart? Or is there, can we get creative in how it's modified? And so I think that's what Commissioner Mosley was saying is that we need more time, staff needs more time to see if we can, can get to a compromise.
Yeah, and I truly appreciate the neighborhood coming together. You obviously have a strong neighborhood. You obviously are valuable and important members of that neighborhood. I understand the, the legacy of this house and what it is and what it means to you and your family. And the fact is, the, the permit was issued and a building was approved that was about eighteen feet tall. The numbers are a little, you know, not exact, but about eighteen feet tall. What was built is twenty-seven feet tall. I mean, it's a significant deviation from what was reviewed. And so, so I, I do think that with these new plans that have been submitted, we need time for the staff to review it. The permit itself says, any substitutions or deviation from the approved work requires further review and approval by the Historic Zoning Commission prior to work being undertaken. So although we've gotten the cart in front of the horse on this one, I do think that the only way that we get a good outcome is by, if, if the applicant's willing to defer and work with the staff to see if there's a way to approve something close to what has been built.
I just need to know what makes, can you tell me why my house is not approved?
Dr. Gregory, just one, one more second. We have another. Anyone else?
Yes, I just want to point out that I'm very sympathetic to everything that I've, that I've heard today, but we're also bound by a certain set of rules and guidelines that we have to comply with. We hear stories about contractors missing the mark or making the mistakes there all the time and I'm the newest person on here and we've tended to, as a committee, we've tended to, you know, to hue the line. But as I listened to you guys and listened to what your neighbors had to say, I was wondering if there was an opportunity for us to make things right short of having you just tear all of this down. If we were able to do that, I would definitely support that. By the same token, if the committee decides to continue and to just follow the line as we have done with every other case since I've been here, I can understand that as well. But I would like to see if we can find some resolution, some kind of way that we can make this right and still abide by what we're bound to do as commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Okay. Applicant, would you like to defer?
Defer what?
Defer your project from a disapproval or an approval today because then you can continue to work with staff on, again, I think you've heard and, and that this is, these plans, this is the first time we've seen it or staff, and to give this moment to continue working together so we can come to some collaboration here. And, and it's up to you to defer, we cannot defer. But we're trying to offer you that, that moment in time to be able to do that.
How long does it take to do that? Because, and I'm only asking because I have four kids, we're in two bedroom because the other part of the house is down. We can't keep living like that. So my question to you all, and I, I need a answer. What, besides the turning one thing and we had to do another, what is, I want to know what guidelines would be issues with my house? That's all I'm asking.
Again.
So I would just answer that and say, we don't know because your house was not built to any plan we have seen until today. We do not know. I don't know every in and out of this neighborhood zoning overlay, this, this overlay. Therefore, we rely on staff analysis, going into the neighborhood, telling us thoughts, which they have not been able to do because, again, this house was built just out of someone's mind. So.
What do you mean, out of someone's mind?
I mean, it was not built to any drawing that anyone has seen. It was just built as, as seen fit by the contractor.
And not to the permit.
But not to the permit. So therefore, we do not know that answer yet. So in order to, in order to find that out, whether it fit, it could fit or does not fit and those things and to come to some sort of compromise, hopefully, that is what we're asking for. The staff can look at these drawings as a, as a, as a new application essentially.
So how long does that take? This was my question.
It would be until next.
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
So you mean to tell me I gotta wait a month?
Yes, ma'am.
What is my other options? If, because I can't keep allowing my kids to live like that. So what is another option? Is there somebody over you all that we can go to?
Okay, sir, please. So we're just giving you this opportunity because either, as you, if you've heard our conversations and, and heard the guidelines that we are adhering to, you're probably gonna get a disapproval. But if you give the time for you to work, continue to work with the staff, you can defer this.
So does that mean I have to meet with them? Like what does that, what does that look like? Because I can't keep taking off of work. So I just want to know what it looks like.
Yeah, it would be meeting with staff. What you've presented and what has been constructed is not something that staff can approve. So it would definitely need to come back to them next month, assuming you have drawings to us by the deadline, if there's changes or something. But what we approved administratively are the drawings that you see up there. We would have not had approval to approve this type of addition. It would have come to the commission if I'd known that's what you'd wanted.
So can, what's the difference in the height of the roof?
We, we really shouldn't be able to have the discussion. You really need to have.
He said it and I couldn't hear him.
I know. Dr. Gregory, also, you know, there's, if there's changes, we, we can't figure it all out today.
So we have to come back here and do it again?
Yes, ma'am.
And you saying it's gonna still be disapproved?
Uh, we didn't say that. We, because we've not seen these plans.
So we just need to submit it through.
And the other thing too, we just want to make sure your contractor knows is not, not to do any more work to that property until there is further discussion and approval. Mr. Contractor, do you understand that? Yes, sir. This.
Oh, okay, what you saying?
We're doing the best we can.
Okay, so when we come back, what happens? That's what my question is.
If you continue to work with staff, Robin Ziegler and her staff, then you can come to some, you know, again, you've presented this new plans and hopefully you can get to a, a place where it is acceptable under the guidelines and, and make sure that that got, that your permit, that, that permit is redone if it's different than what it was done before initially.
So I need to, so we can resubmit the permit and then I need to be communicating with them? So if, if they find that it's within their guidelines, do we have to come back or can they approve? Or do we have to come back to you all?
We don't believe it is within the guidelines or we would have just recommended approval in the first place. We think some changes need to happen. And that's why we were asking you for the as-built drawings so we could understand the project and know what kinds of recommendations to make to you and have those discussions. So since we never had the opportunity to do that, what she's saying is you can do that now if you'd like and come back to them with a new design next month or you could, they could go ahead and make a decision.
So tear my house down and come up with a new design? I'm, I'm confused.
Mr. Contractor, the public hearing is closed. And I think that that's inappropriate to be brought in here of what you're saying right now. So please, if you have to say that, please refrain.
So once we submit the new thing here and you all look at it, what, I come to you all and we describe, we come to like agreement or what happens?
The commission is the decision makers, staff doesn't make decisions.
So when you say communicate.
So we would work with you on possible solutions of what was built to meet the guidelines. And then you could bring that back to the commission if you wanted or you could change nothing and ask them again or they can make a decision today. Whereas Mr. Johnson said, you could go ahead and let them make a decision and you can appeal that decision.
I can't have time to waste. I gotta have a few. My question is, once we submit it, do I communicate with you all and then bring it back?
We recommend that you communicate with us and let us help you come to some changes that would meet the guidelines, but you don't have to. They can make a decision today if that's what you prefer.
So if you all make, once we do this, what happens? That's all I'm asking.
It depends on what you decide.
Dr. Gregory, you can either defer or you would like us to go ahead and make a decision?
Oh, defer means you all can look at, okay, defer.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate it. Okay. We haven't made a decision yet, but we're, yes. Robin, we do not need to vote on a deferral, do we? Okay. Commissioners, is there a motion to defer?
So moved.
Okay, there is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Vice Chair, and we are deferring sixteen oh nine Douglas Avenue per the applicant. And again, we thank the neighborhood and the community to come and speak. Oh, right, because they were leaving, sorry. Okay, yes, let's take a vote. And we did, and now say a second, first and a second. And all in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Okay, none opposed. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you again, neighborhood, community.
So on to fourteen oh five Russell, which is circa nineteen fifty-one to fifty-seven, front-facing gabled house that does not contribute to the historic character of the Lachlan Springs East End Conservation Zoning Overlay. The house suffered damage in the March twenty twenty tornado and after the tornado, the owner replaced the siding with wide embossed siding and windows with vinyl windows. At that time, MHCC did not review the replacement of windows and siding in conservation overlays like Lachlan Springs. Just a little bit of timeline, so twenty twenty was the tornado, March twenty twenty. January twenty one, MHCC staff issued a preservation permit for an addition to fourteen oh five Russell Street. I should go back, we did issue a permit post tornado to rebuild the porch, but again, at that time, we weren't reviewing replacement of siding and windows on historic structures. So we didn't look at the siding or the windows because we weren't reviewing those at that point in time. So January twenty one, we then issued a permit for an addition to fourteen oh five Russell. And then, so that permit was issued under the old design guidelines, but of course now in, in May, the consolidated design guidelines became effective. The owner right now is seeking to install siding and windows on the addition that matched those currently on the historic house. Since the permit was issued under the old design guidelines for Lachlan Springs, staff thought it'd be appropriate to see if the proposed materials meet either set of design guidelines, since it was, you know, again, issued under the older set, but now we're working with a newer set. So the existing house's siding is a select cedar mill hardy plank, which is a cement fiber board with an eight and one-fourth inch size, which results in a seven inch reveal. The siding is embossed. The siding is embossed with a wood grain texture. The current consolidated design guidelines do allow for siding reveal to be seven inches. So, you know, seven inch reveal would be fine on the addition. But neither set of design guidelines allowed for embossed wood grain. Both set of design guidelines require that the siding be smooth. Staff therefore recommends that the commission requires smooth siding as a textured siding on the existing house could be replaced at some point with a material more appropriate for the district. So even though the house has embossed siding, we're recommending that the addition have smooth. The existing house's windows are the YKK residential style, style view series, which are sliders. These are a vinyl window. The applicant would like to use these windows in the additional well, as well. Uh, because window manufacturing and manufacturers and lines change all the time, neither set of design guidelines provide a lot of specifics about windows. Just because again, new windows are coming in on the market and staff looks at kind of each window as they come up, and we do keep a list of pre-approved windows. Um, so there's not much in the design guidelines about window materials, but typically, uh, staff does not approve most vinyl windows or a handful of vinyl windows that we find meet our standards. Um, but when we're looking at these, we found that they don't meet our standards. Um, so staff is recommending disapproval of the YKK residential style view series, uh, which are slider window, finding that they do not meet the standards of the window choices for the neighborhood conservation zoning overlay. Um, so just here are some, this is just for a reference here, is, um, the addition, the, uh, front and re, or I'm sorry, the side and the rear. Um, it's a fairly monocyte addition. Um, it's one story. And, um, it got, I believe it got us, I think it did go to the commission. So, um, happy to answer any questions. And just in conclusion, staff recommends disapproval of the request to use embossed siding and vinyl windows, finding that these materials do not meet neither the older design guidelines, section two B four, or the newer consolidated design guidelines, um, that were recently adopted.
Thank you, Melissa. Is the applicant here?
Hi, my name is Brandon LaComte. I'm the contractor of Lotus Building Group that is doing the new addition on fourteen oh five Russell Street. And, um, as you can see from our permit and our plans, that we are very congruent with, uh, the guidelines of this historical district on every project that we've done in East Nashville, um, and continue to to go forward. Really, the problem with this one is that, um, when this house was reconstructed by another builder, um, it was approved and permits were signed off. It was given, it was given, you know, homeowner's convenience, they can move in. Um, on February twenty-first, I think is when we pull it up. Yeah, when the applicant, when it was approved and a certificate of occupancy was delivered then, um, now we're building our addition and we just want to give our homeowner a house that looks the same. I understand that you guys weren't going through an approval process when this was made, but that is neither the homeowner nor me as the contractors privy to go in and say, well, you weren't approving some things and now you are approving some things. Um, I think as a historical neighborhood altogether, it would be probably better looking overall if we just had a house that looks the same. And, um, that's really what we're looking for here, is just to have an addition that is looking the same. As by the recommendations from the staff, um, to not approve it, we would then have an addition that has the same size siding. It would just be smooth grain. And of course, we would go by the guidelines of the windows that would be provided, so probably wood windows. Which, again, had the house originally been approved for that and had the reconstruction of the original house already had that, um, I wouldn't even be here. We would just be following our guidelines and would be just business as normal. So I just am asking for your recommendation to allow us to continue to use the matching siding and matching windows that have already been approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Open public hearing? Anyone? All right. Close public hearing? Commissioners?
Just a quick question for Melissa, actually. So you said you looked at them, the drawings, like the materials for both the old and the new, you know, not updated. And it wouldn't have been approved, but it was approved, correct?
So, in the, um, so after the March twen- twenty twenty tornado, um, when it needed repair, um, at that point in time, we didn't review the replacement of siding or of windows, um, in the historic, on the historic structure. And so that was something that we just didn't review. So we did a permit, the new porch roof, which matched the old porch roof. Um, but we did not review at that point in time replacement of siding. The newer design guides, we do review replacement of siding, so should they have come to us now, we would have reviewed that siding. But there's no violation on the house. It was, you know, it was just something at that point in time we didn't review. Does that answer the question?
But then it said they had applied for an addition that was never built, correct?
Yes, they applied for an addition and I, I don't remember the exact date, but it was prior to the tornado. They didn't build it. They did their tornado repairs and then they came back and I reissued the permit for the addition. So at that point in time, I think the repairs had already been done.
Okay.
It was the same plans, it's just they hadn't done it beforehand, so we just reissued the permit.
And if I could jump in just to, for clarity's sake, replacement siding, replacement on the existing building wasn't reviewed. But new construction siding is always reviewed. That's not a change.
I can remember a, a similar case in East Nashville a few, couple or three years ago where, and first let me say, this is one of those cases that we're gonna see for a while because the ordinance, because the guidelines have changed with, with sign, with siding. So we're gonna see these where before it wasn't reviewed and now it is, and we're, this, and I understand where the staff is coming from on this. They're hewing to more compliance with guidelines versus less. But from a practical matter, I can understand why builders and homeowners wouldn't want mismatched in this kind of situation. And I do remember in Lachlan Springs a couple of years ago, we went round and round on this and granted the wood grain siding on, uh, on historic house. So it's difficult and I, and one thing for the, for the contractor and, and others in the public, the reason for windows especially, the staff looks so closely is because long-term quality. These are, these are not long-term quality windows and they're gonna fail and they're gonna need to be replaced. In a historic district, we're looking for good quality materials. And that's, that's why, just so you know, I mean.
Of course. I mean, this isn't, this isn't my first project in a historical district. And again, I wasn't the contractor that did the rebuild.
Understood.
And all my projects that I have done, and I've actually done the house next door, are concurrent, concurrent, concurrent with the guidelines of this.
I appreciate that. Thank you for your contribution. So I just say that to say, to, to say that this is one of these that we're gonna have now that, now that the guidelines have been changed. I can see the applicant's, um, side to this and I know that we've approved it in the past. So, for what that's worth.
Madam Chairman and Commissioners, uh, I, I too remember another case that was similar to this. And I, I do think that, that this is a unique situation that doesn't fall within our typical guidelines. It, it is a non-contributing house. Uh, it was done in full accordance with the requirements and permitted. And so, uh, so I think that, uh, that cladding this addition and using the same windows as the rest of the house is appropriate in this circumstance.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Anyone else? Anyone want to make a motion?
Madam Chairman, with respect to fourteen oh five Russell Street, I move, uh, for, uh, the, uh, approval of the applicant's request to use the wood grain siding and the windows that exactly match the existing windows in the home.
Okay. There is a motion. Is there a second? There's a second? All in favor of the motion? Okay. Any opposed? Okay, we have one opposed. However, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, the next item on the agenda is seven oh six Fatherland Street. Um, you did receive, um, a letter in the packet from the designer and then later a letter from the owner that was, that was sent to you, um, several days ago. So this is a request to construct a dadu at seven oh six Fatherland, Fatherland Street. The plan meets all of the dadu standards except for the ridge height is, uh, for the ridge height as it's taller than the historic house. The house is a one-story frame cottage that was constructed circa nineteen twenty and contributes to the edge-filled historic preservation zoning overlay. The commission approved a one-story addition in August twenty twenty and staff administratively permitted a one-story outbuilding in May of this year, which has not been constructed. Uh, the proposed outbuilding is one and a half stories and is eighteen feet, six inches from grade, whereas the historic house is sixteen feet, ten inches from grade and fifteen feet, six inches from finished floor. While it is often possible to have a one and a half story outbuilding behind a one-story home, the modest scale of this historic home may not make that feasible, uh, in this case. Uh, since the lot is larger, it would be possible to increase the footprint, um, to up to a thousand square feet. I believe it's currently at eight hundred and forty square feet. So that would be, um, an alternate option. In conclusion, staff recommends disapproval of the project, finding the dadu does not meet section three B two H one of the Edgefield Historic Zoning District Handbook and Design Guidelines.
Thank you, Melissa. Applicant? Okay, the applicant is not here. Okay.
I apologize.
You just made it on time.
Hi, my name is Christopher Lundquist. Um, I'm here representing the homeowner at seven oh six Fatherland. Rob Coles, excuse me. Unfortunately, he can't be here today due to a previous commitment with a business trip. But, um, I do want to read a few excerpts, um, both from the project manager as well as Mr. Coles in regards to this issue. So, so I am gonna read, um, some information. I think you have copies of this. Uh, this is from Brittany Blanton, who is the project manager. So, we would like to request that the proposed dadu, um, be approved at the height shown due to the restrictive nature of the existing home's overall roof height, um, to increase the livable space above the detached garage. We have endeavored to be mindful of the height while remaining in line with building codes and the necessary vertical dimensions required to achieve a functional design. The lot at seven oh six Fatherland is two hundred and ten feet deep and the dadu will sit at approximately ninety feet from the existing home. Due to these dimensions and the existing foliage at the street, the additional one foot eight inches in height in, of the dadu in relation to the existing home will not be visible from the street. Um, I believe you have some images attached, uh, of the surrounding homes, um, to provide some historical context. Several of the homes in this area are significantly higher than seven oh six Fatherland, um, including one of the neighbors. There are also two datus behind and, um, both of which are much taller than the proposed design. So with the surrounding structures, um, we don't believe that the design will look out of place. So, we do appreciate the consideration while reviewing the project, um, as well as to the commitment of maintaining the integrity, integrity within the historic neighborhoods. Thank you. Uh, now I would like to read from, uh, the homeowner, Mr. Rob Coles. I'm sorry, could not attend the meeting today. Um, uh, I'm in Phoenix and cannot attend in person. Um, he goes, I'm wanting to build a dadu to move my dad into his own place. I said, we've tried to make the dadu as short as possible to match the height of the house excluding the chimney. However, we found that we need an extra one foot eight inches to make it work. My house is one of the shorter homes on the block, but the approved home addition, we will be building along with the trees includes, excuse me. We will be building along with the trees, both deciduous and evergreen, would completely hide the dadu from the street. One thing to also note, the dadu would be smaller than most of the neighborhood, neighborhood, some of which appear quite large. Um, a house three doors from mine has a large dadu and from the street appears larger than the main house. With mine, you won't even see it. All this to say that I asked you please to allow the extra one foot eight inches needed to make this work. Thank you, Rob Coles. Um, I will also say that Mr. Coles has been compliant with previous, uh, projects, um, with the zoning commission. Uh, most likely, or most recently within the last year, um, he replaced, uh, the front columns on his house uh, that were installed by the previous owner had installed that were not compliant. And he did change those to be compliant with the historic bungalow style of the house and the area. So, and also on a personal note, um, this is, this addition is for his father. Uh, his mother passed away um, a couple of months ago. And it's been tough. So, uh, this, this is, uh, a place, a secure, safe place for his father. He's an only child. So, uh, he's hoping to be able to have a place for his father to live, um, near him. So, um, they can be together as a family. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Open public hearing? Okay, close public hearing? Commissioner?
I'm, I just was, I was looking at the, um, the designs and doing a little math in terms of the various things that have been employed, I think to, to, I believe the applicant and certainly trust the application, since the applicants themselves couldn't be here, that they have done several things to try to mitigate the height and even further to mitigate the appearance of the height. And in understanding the restrictions in footprint that are intended in the, um, in the dadu guidelines, I'm, I'm compelled that taking a foot six out of this potentially renders it unusable as a dadu. It's, it, it's, you know, it's a, it's an ask that's too far in, 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 in my analysis of, of the drawings. And I don't find it tremendously out of scale and it's, it's such, um, it's a more minor ask in terms of what's trying to happen here than we've seen and approved in the past, in my opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner?
As a.
Williams? Oh, sorry.
Sorry, Dr. Williams, were you gonna speak? As a counterpoint to that, Ben, I'd like to ask, this isn't, or point out, this isn't just a dadu, it's also a two-car garage. It seems to me in the overall scale of the project, you could fit a dadu within the height guidelines, but you might, your applicant may have to sacrifice what's not been spoken so far, which is the two-car garage part of it. You could get a, you can get a dadu behind this house within the design guidelines, but not necessarily with everything else that they're asking for.
Loaded. And, and I don't disagree. I think we're at a three-car garage, it wouldn't be a dadu anymore, just purely on, uh, on, on the grounds. It would, it, it wouldn't be able, maybe three carriages, but not three cars. That, um, but certainly point, point taken.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question to the staff. So this addition, uh, to the original house is a one-story addition. So if by any chance, because we did allow, uh, if you, the houses are deep enough and then after a certain point, we, uh, previously allowed a one and a half addition. So if there was one and a half addition, uh, will this, the do will meet the guideline? I'm guessing as far as, uh, reach height and everything.
Right, well, the previous addition that was approved, they, they never requested a one and a half story addition, so we haven't seen a plan to that effect. Given the height of the house as well as the conversation that's being had with the dadu, I, I think it, it may be questionable that a half story could be achieved by increasing the height by two feet. There again, we haven't seen plans to that effect.
Thank you. My thinking is, since, you know, this house sits kind of in the deep and, you know, the ninety feet from the existing house, uh, I mean, this dadu location will be ninety feet from the existing, uh, current house. And then forty-four and a five feet from the new addition. So it's kind of farther back. And then their, um, uh, plan is literally asking modest increase and very invisible from the street. And size-wise, you know, traditional dadu, if it was a one and a half addition, I would think, uh, this additional height will be within the guideline. think this additional height will be within the guideline. So for that reason, I'm kind of compelled to the applicant's request.
Thank you, Commissioner. You want to go?
I just wanted to compliment Melissa on your presentation, and particularly the fact that you came up with a compromise that could work and increase the space without the height. And so I just wanted to tell you how much I appreciate that.
And if I could, I just wanted to add one thing, not necessarily about this project, because I kind of see where you're going, and I don't want to talk you out of that. But just for general knowledge, the height of the outbuilding is not based on additions. What we've been trying to do for the last few years is base it on the height of the house from the foundation to the ridge. So that's the reason for the recommendation.
Thank you for that, Robin.
One other quick point. We saw last month how intense Edgefield is about supporting their existing neighborhood guidelines. I am not inclined to vary from that on this case, especially considering that I do think that a compromise solution can be found within what's written on the paper.
Very good comments. It's always sometimes sort of neutral about things like this, because we can make some exceptions. We're not exceptions, but don't want to have any... Set any precedence, because our commission is always on the block. And, you know, when people that come and comment to us that we're egregious, or we're, you know, very stringent, you know, sometimes we have to take that and say, "Yep, that's what we do." My thing, too, is, and over the years, is because... Just because we can't see a project, that doesn't mean that we don't go with the guidelines. Respectfully to all of you who all have commented, commissioners, because we do have a hard job of making these kind of lines and kind of calls. But what we have in front of us is what we should really put priority, and those exceptions and those variants varying from our norm, we should be very cautious about because of how we stand and how we are seen in the public. So just some comments from the chair.
Madam Chairman, with respect to this one, you know, I applaud the designer, the owner, and what they're trying to do, and the... Certainly, I'm one of the biggest proponents in the city of dadas and the ability to have the type of diversity in neighborhoods that those afford. And we are used to granting variances and exceptions when there are physical hardships, when there are sewer lines, when there are other things that keep it from being able to achieve the goals. On this particular project, it sounds to me like all the options for meeting the guidelines and the goals of the owner have not been explored, and that I would be hesitant to grant a variance that could be seen as arbitrary by others, because we typically do, you know, hold a pretty hard line. And a foot, 6 foot and a half or so versus the 9 feet we looked at earlier, you know, there is a big difference in that, but by the same token, they're both variances. So I'd be reluctant to support this one.
Any other commissioners? Otherwise, a motion?
Madam Chairman, with respect to 706 Fatherland Street, I recommend disapproval based on staff recommendations.
Okay. There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of the motion? Yeah. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. We have one no. And the motion passes. Thank you for the conversation and discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, applicant.
Okay. This is an application for...
One of our co... We might need to take a break.
Sure.
If that is okay.
It's okay.
It's now 3:55. 3:55, let's go to 4:05. How about that? Okay?
Okay. This is an application for infill and an outbuilding on a vacant corner lot in Lachlan Springs. The project meets the guidelines in terms of form, siding, setback, orientation, rhythm of spacing, proportion of rhythm of openings, and with final staff approvals, it is also appropriate for materials. The widths of the historic houses in the context range from about 28 to 32 feet wide. The proposed infill is appropriate in width at 28 feet at the street, stepping wider to a maximum of 32 feet. The historic context here is one and one and a half story houses with ridge heights of about 17 to 25 feet tall. Some of the pyramidal roofs are a few feet taller at the peak. The two houses on the bottom here are across the street and up the hill a bit. They both measure about 25 feet from grade to the ridge of that front gable. The proposed infill will be about 27 feet 8 inches from average grade at the front. The proposal involves dropping the grade as well, with the intent of creating an extra foot of building height without rising higher in elevation. Staff finds this to be inappropriate. The grade should not be dropped, and the proposed ridge height should be a maximum of 24 to 25 feet. The commission may recall that the former house on this lot suffered from water infiltration at the right front corner. Staff is concerned that the foundation of this corner, currently proposed to be about four inches tall, may in fact need to be taller. This would push the foundation height taller around the entire site. With the ridge already exceeding the maximum appropriate height, any increase in foundation height will push the ridge to be far too tall. Staff finds that if the ridge height were to be reduced to be a maximum of 24 to 25 feet from unaltered grade at the front, the overall height could tolerate moderate foundation adjustments in the field and still be contextually appropriate. The applicant has been responsive to staff's feedback regarding the one and... Excuse me. Regarding the one and a half story form, and has reduced the eve heights to largely be about 10 to 12 feet from foundation. Here's the rear elevation. The lowest point of grade is here on the street-side back corner. The proposed outbuilding meets the design guidelines for outbuildings. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the project with the conditions that the grade shall not be dropped, the ridge height shall be reduced to be no more than 24 to 25 feet as measured from unaltered grade at the front. The finished floor height shall be consistent. Staff shall approve the materials, and staff shall approve the utility locations. I believe the applicant is here. Do you have questions for me first?
I do have one question.
Yes.
Condition five, I want to understand that it says within five feet. So are we promoting that it should be near the front of the building or not near the front of the building?
This is a standard condition that we are putting on all of our infill at the moment, and I'm going to defer to Robin to explain that to you.
To me, and I just so I'm clear in what I'm asking.
Yes.
Within five feet means it's going to be at the front, and I would think we don't want it there, but I just wanted to make sure that we are clear in communicating what we do and what we don't want.
And you could change that language as part of your... Or whoever makes the motion, but yes, the idea is that it's at least five feet back.
May I ask a quick follow-up question, Robin?
Hold on just a second. Melissa's the expert on this, and I think I said it wrong.
Okay. So this condition came about after we had encountered... So NES changed some of their... How they treated where they would locate their meters for two structures with two or more units. And essentially, we met with them several years ago and kind of worked within their design, and this is kind of what we came up with. So the purpose is to avoid a situation where you see some sort of wall kind of in the front yard where... Which is what they... One of the design options they have required that would have the meters attached to it. So it was really just working with a new NES requirement to address these HPRs, and staff trying to find a way to avoid having those types of walls in the front yard. So that's where that came from.
Maybe this is not appropriate to argue policy or discuss further policy, but I would think that... And happy to craft this, but utility meters shall be located on the building, period. Or shall not be located anywhere other than on the building would be maybe a better way to clarify what we're looking for.
Any other questions for me?
Thank you, Jenny. We may have more later. Applicant?
My name is Brett Diaz. I'm with Paragon Group here on behalf of the landowner, Land Group LLC, who's our partner on this project. This is Haley Bass, also with Paragon Group. Just wanted to sort of provide a little bit more context on this block. It was stated that 20 to 24 feet was... Or 24 to 25 was the max height. We actually had a surveyor go out and measure some of the houses on this street, and sort of the... Some of the images you were shown were sort of the smaller one-story, one and a half story, but there's actually homes that exceed 30 feet in height on this block. And what's also not really being portrayed here is that the opposite side of the street has a condition where we have documented... There may be grades in excess of this, but we have documented conditions where you've got from the sidewalk to the base of the foundation, eight feet of grade change. And so this lot at the corner, our property, is actually the lowest grade of the entire block. And so we just can't understand where the 24 to 25 feet guideline is coming from. We understand that houses with sort of pyramidal roof shapes can maybe have a bit more height, and because it's pushed further back, it's less of the building that actually gets to that height. We have one of those instances where our surveyor measured that building at 1508 Fatherland, 30.7 feet of total height, and that's 38.5 feet from the sidewalk to that ridge. That's more of a pyramidal form. However, 1511 Fatherland, and we provided all these images. I'm not sure if everyone's had a chance to take a look at these or not, but we provided photos with heights in an exhibit. 1511 Fatherland is a cross-gabled craftsman bungalow home, 27.6 feet tall, and it's up the block, sits at a higher grade than we do. So our proposal to drop the grade and introduce a small sort of one-foot concrete retaining wall, which, you know, I've seen countless times in, you know, on historic properties, was just a way to sort of bring the perceived height of the home down. But I think when you're looking at the perceived height, you really have to take into consideration the block and the fact that our lot is literally the lowest grade on the entire block, and that, like I said, some of the houses on the block sit a full eight feet from the sidewalk and perhaps more. That was just one that our surveyor had documented. So the 24 to 25 feet, I just can't understand where it comes from, because there are documented examples on this block of taller homes, even taller homes with the same craftsman bungalow cross-gabled form. So it'd be our preference not to... I know staff indicated that they don't want to see the home dropped. We would appreciate not dropping it either. With respect to the grades, we will... You know, this lot does slope to the east and to the north, so that one corner at the very front, while it will be low, we'll grade the lot such that water is diverted in both directions. We won't, you know... We won't build this house with a water problem. So our preference would not be to drop the house and create that retaining wall condition, but we're just struggling within the 24 to 25 feet to come up with a layout, you know, a modern layout with modern, you know, dimensions of lumber and structure that's a usable one and a half story, especially given that there's other examples on the block of taller homes. So anything else, Haley?
Jenny, thank you for your time. You've been very...
Come to the podium, please. Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you for your time. You've been great to work with.
I have a question for the applicant, just for clarity. On the drawings, there's... Is this a slab-on-grade home, or is it CMU? So it will be slab-on-grade because of the... So you're going to be mechanically... You're going to have to come in and feed, like, I guess, truss between the two, and you'll feed down and up. Is basically... That's the approach? Or maybe you'll do attic for the second floor, but you're going to be... You know, it won't be like most houses that are built where all the mechanical will be under and fed from the top. It'll be a whole different situation.
Yes, sir. Yes. Lately, in historic overlays, we have been doing slab-on-grade, just because typically, you know, the homes are set pretty low, and with the slab, we're just not fighting those sort of low crawl space conditions that code likes to see a certain amount, you know, ductwork clearances. So we're running a ductwork in-conditioned envelope in between the floor system, sometimes in the attic. Sometimes we're using actually like mini-split systems that are just recessing into the, you know, ceiling itself and not having ductwork.
That was some not typically seen, and I just wanted to make sure in the analysis and that the notes were indeed... That wasn't a misprint. Thanks for clarifying.
Okay. Thank you, applicant.
Thank you.
Well, the public hearing is open. Anyone want to speak on this project? If not, we will close public hearing and commissioners' discussion.
Madam Chair, may I ask just one clarification question to the staff? You know, applicant provided some comparison of the neighborhood with the height, you know, various height difference. And I think one house in common is 1508 address, and I think staff report states 1506 and 1508 is 24 feet, but applicant shows 30 feet and 7 inches. So what is the difference or discrepancy?
Yes, that's right, and I appreciate you asking. They did provide this information, and it didn't look right to me, so I went out and measured myself. And do you mind? I can just popping back to... There we go. So that yellow house there on the left, I measured from the grade, so from the ground to the top of that front-facing gable on both of those houses there, the yellow and the blue, and I got 25 feet on both of those. It could be... Maybe they were measuring to the very peak there you see in the back. I couldn't get to there. Maybe that's where they got a little bit of additional... I don't know. I can't speak for how they did their measurements, but I went out and measured several houses on this street, because the numbers just didn't seem quite right to me, and that's what I got in the field. I would, since you asked, I would also like to point out, there were several others that they indicated. One was, let's see, 1419 Fatherland and also 1511 Fatherland, and neither one of those are historic houses. Those are infill, and so we didn't consider those in terms of our context. Appreciate that, and that's very helpful.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I think that Jenny did a good job on this analysis. I'm compelled by the heights that she's using. We haven't actually been provided any kind of, I don't think, official measurements or planned drawings from the applicant disputing average heights, and we routinely approve one and a half story designs that do meet historic context for what design... What neighborhoods they're in. So I think that there's still an opportunity for the applicant to work with Jenny on more to reach an acceptable height in this location without changing the grade, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner. Let's give the architects a few more minutes.
Question for staff, or question which hopefully will lead to some clarity. So I feel certain the applicant doesn't want to come back before us, post-construction, given the history of today's meeting. When we say measured, and you give a range so that gives some latitude, but how does the staff in the house, staff in the past, as grade changes across the front of the house, how do they, where are you measuring from? And obviously, you're measuring to the ridge so that there's clarity on the record now as to how the applicant would, and the staff would determine that in the field?
Yeah, and it's a fair question. Sorry. Because especially on a site like this where the grade changes so much in so many different places, you could get a really different measurement depending on where you measure. I tried to be pretty explicit in the language here, saying as measured from unaltered grade at the front. So we would do sort of average at the front. Kelly will be doing it, so.
So it's an averaged, across the front facade of the house, it's averaged from the highest point at the ridge to an average grade across the front-facing portion of the house? Which is, to me, that's pretty clear.
That was the intent. But yes, if you'd like to provide clearer language in the motion, that would be fantastic.
Yeah, I was understanding where we were measuring to and from and that the two, it's on the record and the applicant is measuring in the same way.
Yep, the clearer we can be there, the better. So thank you.
Good. Duly noted. Anyone else other than that? Someone wants to make a motion? Okay, we're not ready.
Madam Chair, with respect to 1501 Fatherland, I move that we approve the staff recommendation, including all five conditions.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second? Or a question?
Before there's a second, I would like for us to provide a little more clarity on point number five. In that, can we table the motion for a moment? The way it's written, it requires utilities to be within five feet of the front of the house, which is visually not desirable, but practically may be required, especially with overhead power. But I would say mechanically, and utilities is a general term. And so I would say mechanical units located that close to the front of the house is generally not desirable. And typically, some approval, or at least administrative review of that in a plan, those things may not be known when an applicant appears here. I think, it does say utility meters, I correct myself, but that, I want to make sure that we're crystal clear in terms of what that means. That would, to me, a utility meter would be gas service and electric service to the house shall be located, or can be located, within five feet of the front of the house or further back. This requires it to be in that location. And if the staff could weigh in, if that is what the utilities will require, then I just want to understand that and I'll shut up.
Right, and I think we had been saying that HVAC units should be at the midpoint or beyond, which, you know, seems to be not a problem to achieve. But it was just what we had experienced with specifically electric meters and trying to prevent that from happening again. And so that condition really was feedback from NES for residential dwellings with two or more units. So that may not apply here.
I wonder, Ben, if you would be more comfortable with it saying at least five feet back?
I was really trying to understand if there is a requirement from the utility that it must be in this location. And sometimes there is. But that what we're saying is it must, within says it must be in this place. And there's not a lot of room to wiggle there. And the preference would be from the back.
Maybe I can speak to that. From our conversations with them, it's not, that's not necessarily the required location. It varies per site. In some cases, they're able to do it in the rear yard. In some cases, they want to do it in the front yard in front of the house. But this is kind of a solution that we kind of reached with them that they could work with.
And I would, I've seen the same. And I think what we would want to have some input, or what the staff certainly would want to have some input, any location other than the side of the house in front of the midpoint would need review by the staff. That, I would feel more comfortable with that. You know, staff is going to be reasonable. But yes, says it can't, you know, because of the angle or where this power is coming from, we can't locate it here. Well, sure, we'll want to have some input there. But that it, we reach undesirable utility locations because of lack of direction or laziness is generally not a good outcome.
Another question for legalese on that. Will we continue to see this kind of language in the rest of our projects? Because we haven't seen this language in the past. So that, you know, it's like the midpoint, the mechanicals are midpoint of the house on back.
It is something we've had for a little while now, a year or more. But what if we just said utility meters and mechanicals shall be reviewed if located anywhere forward of the midpoint of the house?
Mm-hmm. How's that, commissioners? Okay. Yep, very well brought up. Okay.
So I would maybe initial, I would propose that amendment to condition number five and would be asking for a second.
Okay. So are you making that second, Commissioner?
I think I'm amending, I'm proposing an amendment to the motion and either vote on that.
Okay.
I second the amended motion.
Okay, so then we are seconding the motion of Commissioner Price now, correct?
I think the order is to vote on the amendment. And then we would have an amended motion and it would need a second.
Exactly. Let's make it simple. Legal, are we on that? Can you just clarify that we are on right? Or Robin, let us, okay. Yes.
So on 1501 Fatherland, I move that we accept we accept the staff recommendation with conditions one through four as is and changing condition five to what Commissioner Mosley just said.
Actually, Robin, if you could just repeat that sentence for us, please.
Utility meters and mechanicals shall be reviewed if located anywhere forward of the midpoint of the house. And I'll add to that prior to an administrative sign-off on building permits.
Thank you, so moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, there is a second? All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, commissioners. And thank you, staff, for clarification on that.
All right. The application for 1109 Porter Road is to construct a new duplex infill and outbuilding that does not include a dwelling unit. Last month, the commission approved demolition of the non-contributing building on the site and disapproved infill in an outbuilding, finding that the scale wasn't appropriate for the historic context. The lot at 1109 Porter Road is large with 75 feet of frontage and approximately 239 feet of depth. It is not, it is not atypical of the context as lots with historic homes on this block of Porter Road tend to be large with street frontages that range from 50 feet to 100 feet wide. The historic context on this block of Porter Road includes three historic homes. One is located to the left of the site, which is the top-left photo. And two are located to the right, which are the, shown on the bottom. All three of these historic homes are modest one-and-one-half stories. The maximum height and width of these contributing houses are approximately 25 feet tall and 34 feet wide. So here are the front and left-side elevations that were approved or disapproved last month. And here are the front and rear elevations of the current proposal. The current proposal is similar to the plan that was disapproved last month. The height and width, which match the maximum height and width of the historic context, are the same. The new construction reads as one-and-one-half stories at the front and incorporates dormers that are each approximately nine feet wide and accommodate triple windows. Front dormers on historic homes on this block are smaller and typically accommodate a paired window. So while the infill reads as one-and-a-half stories at the front, the side elevations are still a full two stories. With the revised plan, the eaves have been reduced from approximately 19 feet to 17 feet. And the depth has increased from approximately 95 feet to 97 feet. Staff finds that the two-story scale on the side elevations, combined with the width of the front dormers as well as the overall height and width of the infill, which are at the maximum of the historic context, push the overall scale to a large one-and-one-half-story infill that isn't appropriate for this block of Porter Road. So while a one-and-one-half-story infill could be appropriate for this lot, staff finds that the height and scale of the proposed infill overwhelmed the historic context. Since a revised plan addressing staff's concerns over the height and scale would result in a redesign, staff recommends disapproval since the proposed infill does not meet section 5A and 5B of the design guidelines. So the infill meets all setbacks and includes an outbuilding in the rear yard. The outbuilding is one-story and meets all guidelines. However, staff is recommending disapproval of the project as a whole since codes will not allow for the construction of an outbuilding without a primary building. So in conclusion, staff recommends disapproval of the proposed infill and outbuilding, finding that the project does not meet sections 5A for massing and scale, 5B for form of Part One of the Consolidated Design Guidelines for turn of the century, neighborhood conservation zoning overlays.
Thank you, Melissa. Applicant?
Good afternoon. I'm Brent Hunter, architect, 1521 Russell Street. And thanks, Melissa, and everyone on the commission for being here. We were here last week, or last month, discussing 1109 Porter Road. And some of the changes that have been made were at the request of you all and the staff, lowering the eaves on the side of the home to be one-and-one-half story. And I had tried to push for actually widening the home outside of what would have been the maximum width. But the owners decided not to go with that direction. And we've kept it within the maximum width. And we are pushing the maximum height and the maximum width, but we're not going beyond that. And if you see the side elevation, we've dropped the eaves and kind of reconfigured the upper floor to allow for those eaves to be lower. So now we're just hoping that this will pass.
Thank you, applicant. Open public hearing? Close public hearing? Commissioners?
I'll jump in. I'm completely in agreement with the staff recommendation for disapproval. I just don't feel like, it still reads as a two-story form across the side. And I don't think that lowering the eaves, you know, the two feet have gotten you where you need to be. And I guess with that, I just support the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'm in agreement with Commissioner Fitz on that. But would hear other comments, but it, I had a hard time deciphering what was different.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay.
I'm in agreement with Commissioner Fitz and Commissioner Lee. You know, the beauty of infill is after demolished, we can rebuild the house appropriate, in line with historic content. I mean, this drawing is pretty, but it's, you know, four-bedroom modern house with lots of amenity. So I think, you know, applicant can work with the staff and make it better because we have seen pretty much similar to this type of, you know, blueprint. But it was more modest, three-bedroom with appropriate, you know, amenity. So I understand this lot is bigger, but with in line with historic context, I think there's more room to improve. So I wholly agree with the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I think that's well-stated all around. I'm in agreement. If there's any other comments or questions, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Please, sir.
Okay. Madam Chair, on 1109 Porter Road, I move that we approve the staff recommendation to disapprove the proposed infill.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a second? All in favor of the motion? Okay. Any opposed? None? The motion carries. Thank you.
All right. The next application is for 1021 Russell Street, 120 South 11th Street. Prior to this meeting, you did receive written comments from Councilmember Withers. So just wanted to state that. So this is an application to reconstruct the tower at 1021 Russell Street that was damaged by the March 2020 tornado and to construct a new infill structure at 120 South 11th Street that is attached to the rear of the historic church at 1021 Russell Street. The building at 1021 Russell Street was constructed circa 1910, 1911 as the Russell Street Presbyterian Church. The historic house that was located at 120 South 11th Street was constructed circa 1895. And that structure was significantly damaged by the tornado. Staff issued an emergency permit to demolish it in June 2020. So in November 2020, staff issued a permit to stabilize and repair and reconstruct much of the historic church based on an engineer's report that was submitted by the property owner. The preservation permit did not include the reconstruction of the tower, which is now proposed with this application. The applicant proposes to reconstruct the tower with the same dimensions as what was there originally, but proposes to use metal and insulated frosted glass as a contemporary version of what was lost. While replacing historic materials does not meet the guidelines, the historic materials are no longer there. Staff finds that reconstructing the tower at the same scale but with contemporary materials can meet section 3B1 of the design guidelines since the tower is a character-defining feature and it would restore the structure that is no longer there. Although the commission does not typically approve attached structures, the site is unusual in that in Lockland Springs, East End neighborhood. The properties at 1021 Russell and 120 South 11th together, they're under common ownership. And also together are slightly over half an acre. As proposed, the addition as proposed can satisfy the design guidelines for the location and scale of an addition while also reading as an appropriately scaled infill along the South 11th Street frontage. As proposed, the addition meets all setbacks. It ties into the rear of the historic church with an appropriate connector. The proposed addition is a full two stories in height and is neither taller nor wider than the historic building. The addition is located at the rear of the historic building and ties into the rear of the church with a flat-roofed connector that matches the eve height of the historic church and proposed addition. Staff finds that the new construction meets the design guidelines for an addition while also reading as an appropriately scaled four-square infill along South 11th. Where the addition reads as an infill, staff finds that the scale meets the historic context as there are several other two-story houses, historic houses, in the immediate vicinity. While the addition has a residential form, it does accommodate non-residential uses that are permitted by the base zoning. In order to serve these uses, the project incorporates some detailing that is more typical of non-residential forms, but in proportions that can be appropriate for the historic context at this location. So some of these examples are the ground-level openings on South 11th Street, which are actually an aluminum storefront system. And then also, the front wall of what reads as an infill is angled to, it's recessed at an angle that reads as a front porch. So staff finds that the design of the addition appropriately dresses the historic context while also serving non-residential uses. So here's an elevation with a section of the addition that shows where the new construction attaches to the rear of the church. And here's an elevation of the new construction that will read as the left side. And here's an elevation of the new construction, uh, that will read as the left side of the infill. The flat roof portion that is slightly taller than the eaves is, is actually a mechanical deck. Um, the design guideline states that roof decks, um, are, roof decks are inappropriate unless surrounded on all sides by an appropriately pitched roof. In this case, the deck is accessed via a hatch rather than a stair tower, and the purpose is to accommodate those mechanical units, uh, for the, for the use. Since the deck is located at the rear and does not serve as occupable space, staff finds that it, it can be appropriate and meet the guidelines in this case. And here's the left side of the historic church or, or the rear part of what appears to be infill. And in conclusion, staff recommends approval with the following conditions. Uh, the finished floor height shall be consistent with the finished floor height of adjacent historic structures. Two, regarding, uh, approval of all materials, um, prior to purchase and installation, and three, uh, approval of the, the roof color as well as the masonry, um, we would need to see samples before those are purchased and installed. So with these conditions, staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Melissa.
All right.
The applicant here.
All right.
So Melissa, I do have a question for you. The, the number one is the finished floor height.
Yes.
Did I see that they are trying to match the existing finished floor height?
Yes.
Okay.
That, that's just a standard condition that, but it, yes.
So there's no, there's no issue with the?
No, as proposed, it, it appears that it would meet that condition. It's just to, to verify it in the field in case, sometimes we see things go awry, so that just allows us to verify it.
I've got, I've got a question for you, too.
Sure.
In the staff report, and you mentioned this too, and maybe I'm just not, maybe I'm missing something, but you said that we don't typically approve attached structures. I, I don't understand that.
So that was really a nod to that this sort of situation where, so you have two lots, um, and essentially it's an addition to one building, whereas, um, typically you would see it as a freestanding infill of its own. So the fact that it, it reads as infill and yet technically is an addition to another building, uh, is just, it's just not a typical situation. I think we may have seen it one other time, maybe with, um, East Ivy, um, where they, they did an addition like that, but also read as infill.
Again, and this may be a question down the road for the applicant, but I would think to do an addition to this, that you'd have to consolidate the lots together?
I think that's more a question for the building codes.
And that's not under our purview, but, but, I mean, in that case, if it is, has to be consolidated to build this, then I would think it would just be considered an addition and.
Yeah.
So I just, I just got confused about.
Yeah, sure. As of now, it's two lots. If they wanted to consolidate it, they would go through the planning commission, um, and do that. Um, but I have also seen the codes department approve, approve additions over lot lines where it's under single ownership. It may be that they just consolidated into one parcel. So, but that's, that's not for us.
So that, I mean, I guess that's what you meant, is like, we're not approving whether it can or can't be attached. We still approve, we still have to review the structure.
Right. Well, I'm, what I'm saying is, in this case, typically you would see the church and then an infill next door, not attached, is that what?
Stop me if I'm, if this isn't correct, but typically you'd either see a small addition that, you know, is, is trying to be hidden, is, is not a major structure, or you'd see an infill detached structure in the back. So this one is attached, but it's made to look like infill. And so even though that's not something you typically see, we thought it was appropriate in this case for, because it is such a unique property. Does that make sense?
Any more questions for me?
Maybe in a minute. That was unusual. Yep, sorry. Uh, yes, applicant, come on up.
Hello, I'm Tracy Ford with EOA Architects, and I've had the honor to work with Mark Sanders, the property owner and neighbor across the street, um, from the very beginning, right after this happened. Um, it's been an honor to, that Mark has bought this property and decided to, um, reinvigorate it and bring it back to the East Nashville fabric. So it's been really fun and exciting to do this. Um, we are in favor of all staff's recommendations, and we've been working closely from the get-go on the design and the concepts. Um, we're passing around an exhibit today because we understand there's some questions about the tower specifically. So we wanted to provide a few more documents relative to the tower's design and inspiration and where it came from. Um, if you see on the first couple of pages, there's historic references to what was there before. Um, essentially, the tower was four stories, two stories, actually three stories of masonry with a little cupola on the top, is what it was originally. So the tornado took off the top two layers of the cake, if you will. So we spent a lot of time counting bricks to figure out how tall it was, because we didn't have existing documents, and really understanding what was there before. So the tower idea here is that the third level is recreating kind of a ghost, almost a lantern of what was there before, with a steel frame that's mimicking the openings that were there before. We're proposing to put back the two levels of cornices that framed that former masonry opening to make a new contemporary beacon to East Nashville. And then on the fourth level, um, we're proposing a new cupola that speaks to, you know, new East Nashville. Um, the cupola before was octagonal in shape. This spire has eight sides to reference that octagonal shape. So I think that's, we wanted to provide a little more info because we heard that the tower folks wanted to discuss that. So we would love to be approved as designed.
Thank you.
Yeah?
It's beautiful. Open public hearing? Close public hearing? Okay. Commissioners?
I have, I should have a question for the applicant. Um, I'm looking at, um, the rendering verse, and I think there's a, maybe a, this elevation is, is a place to start. I think it may be a function of rendering and intent that I want to make sure we as a commission understand that I'm reading it.
Yeah.
Correctly, that the front porch of the addition, which is an obvious nod and, and well-done to go from commercial church building to reading as residential, has a really tall front, um, it looks like a really tall front stoop with a set of stairs to ma, imagine the matching of the floor-to-floor was very critical to function and all those things. And that seems in somewhat significant contrast to the s, to the house, at least in the drawing, it's, it's, it looks like a very significant contrast to the house that's right next door in terms of its foundation height.
I, I think it's difficult to show in these elevations.
Sure.
There's actually more topography where we're doing different layers as the stairs go up to help address that so that it's not quite as tall-looking as it looks like in this elevation right here. But I appreciate your sensitivity to that as I.
I thought that might be the case, I just wanted to make sure.
It's more of the way it's portrayed right now than the way it will be when it's constructed.
Yeah, well.
So I agree. The last thing we want it to feel like is there's a giant wall. We want it to play nice and feel, you know, almost exactly how the four squares all along that street feel. So that was the, the genesis for the addition, to make it feel like it's new, but it nods in proportion to its neighbors.
Thank you for the clarity.
Yeah.
Uh, one more question, and, oh, go ahead. And this, like I said before, this isn't really under our purview, but I'm just curious, do you have to consolidate the lots together to do this?
You know, we've been talking with our civil engineer about that from the start, and we haven't had to so far, so I don't know that we have to.
It's our ADA, ADA compliance to the church, the way it's constructed, if I'm gonna leave the church as it, as it was. So that gives us the ability to put our elevator and everything over on the other side and connect it and provide ADA, um, capabilities.
But I guess with connecting it, if you don't consolidate, are you still admitting the setbacks? Does it, that allow you to do that? Like side setbacks between the two?
You're asking really good questions that I think are for planning and zoning and our civil engineer.
And that's, that's not for us to review or decide, but it kind of, since they go hand-in-hand, I was just curious.
Yeah, I, I do think you're right. I think in the end, it's gonna have to be platted together as one plat, but yes.
Hey, hey, Tracy, how are you? Nice to see you again.
Hey, good to see you.
I just want to say, I think this is a wonderful plan. I'm, I'm a neighbor, I used to work for eleven years in the blue house that got blown down right next door. In fact, I think this tower ended up in that blue house.
It did. Wish I'd known that, I could have, I could have saved you.
So anyway, I was really excited to hear that you had bought it and that you were, um, also a, a local East Nashville resident, and I think that this is really well-done, and I want to compliment you on it. And, uh, I'm, I'm totally in favor of, of the staff recommendations. I think the solution for the tower is creative and modern and not trying to mimic what was there historically, and is a, a cool sort of, um, monument to what the tornado did. And, um, also not under our purview, I'm curious to know what's gonna be, what's, what's gonna be there, if you know, obviously it's commercial, but there's a big space here too, so, um, I don't know if you.
I'd love, you know, I'd love for a restaurant to be in the sanctuary.
Yeah.
Tall ceilings and wide space, put the rest, the kitchen over in the new addition with all the fire safety issues, and then ADA capacity, and then retail office.
Mm-hmm. Well, sounds great. Thank you, good job.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for your preservation. Yep. Absolutely.
Madam Chairman, I think this is an excellent project, well-executed and well, uh, well-intentioned, uh, and well, well-developed. And with respect to one-twenty South Eleventh Street, I move for approval with staff recommendations.
Is a motion?
I'll second that, and I, I just also want to add that I think it's just a, an extremely thoughtful project, um, and a, a creative solution of, of how to handle those lots, and I'm excited that you all were able to save this building and, and kind of bring it back, um, to its glory, and so it's a, it's a great project.
Thank you. There's a first and a second, all in favor of the motion? None opposed? Motion passes. Again, thank you very much. Looking forward to seeing completion.
All right, this is, um, eighteen twenty-six Fifth Avenue North. Um, the application is to construct a new duplex infill and two three-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot garages at eighteen twenty-six Fifth Avenue North. The house is non-con, uh, the, the original house at eighteen twenty-six Fifth Avenue North is non-contributing, and it received an administrative permit for demolition in August of twenty-twenty-one. Uh, the proposed structures include a two-story duplex that is thirty-three feet, ten inches tall from grade, and two single-story garages in the rear that are each thirteen feet, two and one-quarter inches tall from grade. Um, staff finds that duplex and two garages meet all of the guidelines for massing and scale, form, siding, setback, and orientation, proportion and rhythm of openings, and appurtenances and utilities. Uh, staff finds that the known materials of the project meet the guidelines, but additional information is needed on other selections. With staff review of the final material selections for roof color, masonry, windows, doors, trim, porch elements, and driveway materials prior to purchase and installation, staff finds that the project meets the design guidelines for materials. Staff recommends approval of the project with the following conditions. The finished floor height shall be consistent with the finished floor heights of the adjacent historic houses. Um, staff approved the final details, dimensions, and materials of windows and doors prior to purchase and installation. Staff approved the shingle and the metal roof color. Staff, staff approved the materials for the porch elements, including porch floor and steps, and staff approved masonry samples. And paired and ribbons of multiple windows should have a four-to-six inch mullion in between each window. Uh, with these conditions, staff finds that the project meets sections four, five, and six of the neighborhood conservation zoning guidelines.
Thank you, Joseph. Applicant? Or have any questions from staff, I'm sorry.
You've done a great job.
Yeah, okay. All right. Open public hearing? Close public hearing? Okay. Motion? Discussion? He's fast on that drawing.
Make it stop flashing, sorry. Not anymore. Uh, I, a couple of items to, um, maybe point out, and, and one, uh, interesting curiosity of the brick, um, it's pretty, very substantial brick railing at the front of the house, and I think, um, the scale at which those are rendered relative to the house is, is important in that, um, the staff, if the applicant wishes to make changes to how that's constructed, that, um, those be communicated clearly before their change in the field. We've seen, I say that because we've seen a lot of, um, we've seen a lot of porches that sort of fall short after the fact where we've got CMU that is weirdly proportioned, and then they wrap some lick-and-stick stone around it, and it just looks bad. So I would, I'm not advocating for that and quite, quite the opposite, I just want to make sure that the applicant, um, is, um, follows the intent of the drawings. Uh, and additionally, this, um, application does not show a divider between the two porches that is often something that, um, is desired by residents, and just want to be clear that that's not shown in the drawings and would not be approved.
If you're gonna speak, please come to the podium. Thank you.
Sorry, the plan would be to have a twenty-four-inch-high divider in between. Noted.
Okay.
I have a, I have a question for staff. I guess just looking at the house to the left and the house to the right, they're both one and a half stories, and this is a two-story. So I guess just, so I understand what, you know, which, which properties are used to determine.
It's a good question.
I'll take this one, 'cause, um, 'cause he's, he's new, so he's not as familiar with it. Um, this is in a Salem Town neighborhood conservation zoning overlay, which has very, very little historic context.
Okay.
And so there, many years ago, there was an agreement that we would allow up to thirty-two feet, thirty-five, for infill. So where, I mean, you're absolutely right, where in all the other districts, you're really looking hard at the immediate context, not so much in this one.
Thank you.
I think Commissioner, too, because before the overlay, there was already quite a few tall construction there, and it was just, you know, um, really a compromise to, to still honor the historic fabric of Salem Town as best as possible, so, yeah.
Quick question then about Salem Town, given that. Um, we don't see a lot of additions there on small contributing homes. Would we also give similar latitude to those? I mean, I feel for property owners who own a contributing house in this property, and I'm sorry, this doesn't have anything to do with your, your case. Uh, and maybe this isn't a question, not a question for right now, but.
And I, I think that's a good question.
Do you see what I'm getting at?
And I think we, we have, the thing about a lot of these lots are that they're very, very narrow, and the buildings already ramble very far back, so, yeah, I mean, I think we have allowed for a little additional height on those additions where it might not be appropriate in other districts.
Okay, thank you.
I've done five on this block, but with, the houses were a hundred-plus years old, where we kept the existing structure and then added to the back.
Yeah.
And, and so the existing, the fabric stays the same on the existing structure, and we can do the two-foot raise on the addition.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments, commissioners? Commissioner?
I'm move, uh, approval of eighteen twenty-six Fifth Avenue North, um, with the staff conditions and the stated, um, change to the application of a dividing wall on the front porch, no taller than twenty-four inches, uh, as stated by the applicant in the, on the record today.
Very good.
A second.
All right. Motion and a second. Vice Chair, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? None seeing? The motion passes. Thank you.
One nineteen and one twenty-one Third Avenue South are two separate structures. One twenty-one Third Avenue South is a two-story commercial structure, um, constructed circa eighteen-ninety, so that's the one on the left. One nineteen is the one on the right, and it is a two-story commercial structure constructed circa nineteen-twenty. Both structures contribute to the Broadway Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay, and both of them share the same owner. The applicant proposes two rooftop additions, one over each structure. Although both, both historic structures are two stories in scale, they are different heights. One twenty-one Third Avenue South is approximately ten feet taller than one nineteen Third Avenue South. Most of the rooftop additions on both structures meet the requirement that the rooftop, rooftop addition should not be taller than one story and fifteen feet above the parapet. Because the two roofs are at separate heights, share the same owner, and the owner wishes to connect the two rooftop spaces, there's a small portion of the rooftop addition over one nineteen Third Avenue South that exceeds the fifteen-foot-tall requirement and is twenty feet tall. Staff finds that this taller portion to be appropriate in this instance for two reasons. One, the taller portion only covers a small portion of the roof over one nineteen Third Avenue South. South, it's just approximately 10 feet wide, whereas the overall width of the roof is closer to 80 feet. And two, the applicant has stepped this taller portion of the addition back approximately 45 feet, helping to reduce its visibility and impact on the scale of the historic structure. Overall, staff finds that this taller portion is modest in scale and will not be highly visible. The rooftop additions meet the requirement that they be stepped back 30 feet from the front facade. The project includes rooftop railings that are stepped back at least eight feet from the front wall, which does meet the design guidelines. And here's an axiometric view of the rooftop additions. The materials for the rooftop structure and railings have not yet been determined, but the applicant has indicated that they would largely be steel and glass. Staff finds that the materials would be appropriate for the rooftop addition, but recommends approval of all final material choices prior to purchase and installation. So with the condition that staff approve all final material choices, staff finds that proposed rooftop additions meet Section 3 of the Design Guidelines for the Broadway Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay.
Thank you, Melissa. Any questions?
I have a question for a little bit. I can wait till...
Here. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I guess just in the, in reviewing rooftop additions, I know it's a little bit different than existing, you know, an existing structure or new infill. Do we review, like, the sides, the back? I know these are highly visible. There's a vacant parking lot behind there. Do we review?
I mean, it's not that we don't review, but I think we're much more flexible on the sides and rear facades with the reason that it's next to, you know, I think it's next to a vacant lot, so, you know, something will probably be built there eventually. And so, you know, in terms of their, the openings, and we will look at the materials and the materials of the openings and the materials of the design, but, you know, in terms of looking at like what those side and rear facades are, we've kind of always treated them as more utilitarian in nature.
Okay.
And this one is more highly visible than some of the other ones because of those vacant lots, but the understanding is that at some point will likely be developed.
All right. Two, I have two more questions.
Yeah, sure.
So for the rooftop addition on the left, you know, it's a fairly standard, you've got the wall setback. But a question on it, you know, is the openings, I guess what, what avenue have we been pursuing with doors? Because it's not punched openings like in the main facade.
Right.
And the guidelines don't give a lot of...
Right. We haven't been particularly, particular on openings on these rooftop additions. I mean, our kind of hope with all of them is that they are less visible and, you know, pushback, so you're not really looking at them as the main historic structure, but the historic structure. So in the past, and Rob, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we haven't really mandated a certain type of window opening. A lot of them, I think, kind of have the kind of sliding glass doors or, you know, they have windows and, but also some solid walls, because a lot of times it's back-of-house space for the restaurant and bar.
Okay. And then my last question. And then the rooftop addition on the, for the portion on the right, I mean, it's, there's a small wall that's hiding, I think, some of the mechanical, but, I mean, it's more of just an open structure. And have we done, have we approved many of those that aren't like a solid?
I don't know. It's out of my head, but I think, you know, we were...
Okay.
Exactly like that. Okay. Yeah. I mean, our goal is always kind of the, you know, not allowing any more intrusion, so if they have it more open in nature, you know, that's, as long as it's meeting that setback, as long as that roof isn't extending over any further than they're supposed to be extending, whether or not there's a wall there, we haven't had a say one way or another. And, you know, if this owner were to come back one day and say, or even under this permit saying, "We want to wall that up," you know, make it enclosed space, that would likely be a staff-level change.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying.
Don't go yet. Just 'cause we're already discussing it. So remind us again about rolling doors, you know, we, garage doors.
Sure.
Yeah. Just remind us of that, of, you know, the same kind of...
Do we allow doors, garage doors on the rooftop?
We have on rooftop additions allowed roll-up doors, but not on the facade of the historic building.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Just to be really clear. Also, in conversations with applicants like that, because we're seeing more like, you know, irregular lighting, those, you know, that we have to come back and do a showcase clause, do you have conversation with the applicant so that that's prevented?
Mm-hmm. Yes. Yeah. I mean, you know, and this owner has done work on the, on the buildings and so, you know, we've worked with them in the past and, you know, as part of all of our approvals, we, you know, tell people that we still need to review the windows and the doors and the final materials and, you know, there's another step where, you know, we give them our permit, but then when the contractor goes to get the codes permit, we also then follow up with them a second time. So they should be getting the information.
It sounds redundant, but we never are for sure.
Yeah.
So, just to cover...
We tell them every step of the way that we can tell people, so...
Thank you. Thank you, Steph.
And it's on the permit.
Right. Do the best you can. Okay. Is the applicant here? I almost forgot that.
Good afternoon, good evening. It's getting late. I'm Stuart Dorn with Remick Architecture. I'm just here to represent the client and answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you for being here.
Yeah.
Appreciate you waiting. Close public hearing? If there's nobody else here, I see none. So, Commissioners?
I could be wrong, but I can't remember a time when we had in downtown Historic District an application that did not have any significant conditions of approval or some argument about those.
That's right.
So thank you very much for that.
Right.
And that's all I have to say.
Don't say it, it's so easy.
Well, based on that comment, with respect to 119 to 121 Third Avenue South, I recommend approval with staff conditions.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair. There's a motion?
Second.
There is a second. By Commissioner Mahal. All in favor of the motion? Okay. None opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you again, applicant. And thank you, applicant. Our very last applicant. Thank you for your patience and your time as well.
So 105 Broadway is located in the Broadway Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. The main structure was constructed in 1935 as a produce warehouse, internally houses restaurants and offices. It is four stories tall, constructed of reinforced concrete and brick-turned walls. The violation is for a one-story detached wood structure that faces Broadway and sits to the right of the building in its face, which was previously used as an alley. The structure was constructed without permit. The shed is considered new construction and follows the guidelines for new construction. The building, as it currently stands, is one story tall, is constructed with wood planks, and has a gambrel roof. It's hard to say. It is not compatible in height or scale to adjacent buildings and does not meet the requirement stated in the guidelines. It is also significantly smaller than surrounding structures, does not have similar massing, and does not have a three-part design stressed in the guidelines. Given that many of the surrounding structures are large-scale, masonry, commercial buildings, the shed is generally not compatible as it does not have the elements seen in commercial structures, such as a defined entryway, a flat and low-pitched roof, or similar opening patterns seen in commercial structures. Materialally, it is also not compatible, as wood is not commonly used as a primary cladding in commercial structures. Based on this, staff recommends disapproval for the shed at 105 Broadway, finding that the project does not meet Section 3 for new construction in the guidelines. Staff recommends that the structure is removed within 60 days of the Commission's decision.
Thank you. Kelly? Applicant?
Good afternoon. Kirk Clements, I represent Nashville Underground. They're the owners of the structure at issue here. They're also the lessee of the building at 105 Broadway. They leased the entire building. It's actually now six stories. It went under, it underwent major renovation in 2017, adding two stories. The Nashville Underground is a restaurant, bar, live music venue, very similar to other establishments on Broadway. And this particular structure is used to sell food, usually on the weekends, to people on the street. What wasn't noted in the initial comments is that it's a portable structure. And so when, when my client wanted to build the structure and use it, we reviewed the guidelines and therein it states that, and we looked at the Historic Zoning Handbook, and it says portable buildings that are no larger than 10 by 10 do not have a permanent foundation design and use primarily for the storage of household goods, personal items, and other materials used on a limited basis, used on a limited basis, and are not hooked up to utilities. So we, we only use it on the weekends, on occasion. I'm not sure how often it gets pushed back into the alley, so it's not visible from the street. So we, that's why we didn't initially seek approval from Historic, is we thought it fell within these guidelines, or outside the guidelines, I should say. And then also, this is from page five of your handbook, it has a chart that says preservation permits required. And if you go down to the, to the construction of a pertinence, it has a, it has parentheses, with the exception of portable storage buildings less than 100 square feet. So this was done in August of 2019, so it's been there for two years. And in May of this year, a letter was sent to the landlord advising of the structure. I communicated with your staff. And the only answer that I could get as to why this was in violation is because it was visible from the street. Well, I went back and looked at the handbook and I don't see that qualification. It was excluded from the guidelines. So I'm not quite sure why this is in violation, but what I'd hope to do today is provide more facts that may, that maybe they didn't have, that may change the analysis of whether or not this is in compliance. And the main thing is it's portable. You can see, if you look at the application that we submitted, you can see that it has wheels. In fact, now it's about 10 feet off the street. It can be pushed back into the alley. I think the, I'm not quite sure the length of the building. It may be 70 feet or so, but it goes quite a ways back. You can see how deep the alley is in the application, or the pictures with the application. And so really what, what we're asking is that it be approved, if it needs to be pushed back in the alley on the weekends, I mean, after the weekend, and it only be used on occasion. To us, it's very analogous to these hot dog carts that you see up and down Broadway. In fact, I, I do have pictures of a couple of those, if I can, if I can provide those to the, to the board. I believe that there's 11 copies there. In, in particular, in front of Honky Tonk Central, there is a hot dog stand that is there almost all the time, especially on the weekends. And there's also usually a hot dog stand beside at least one or two of the other buildings on Broadway. And we feel like that if this thing didn't have a roof and it had some handles on it that you can pick it up and push it, it wouldn't be an issue. And so what I would submit to the board is, with this understanding of what this structure is and that it's portable and the use of it, that my client be able to, to use it. If you, if you're just getting the packet of pictures, it's the, you'll see in the last two pictures, there's a hot dog stand right off Broadway, and then there's one, in fact, in the doorway of Honky Tonk Central. So really, we're just looking for a way to, to be able to use this on the weekends and yet be in compliance with the historic guidelines.
Thank you, Mr. Applicant. Open public hearing? Close public hearing? And discussion?
I have a question for the applicant. I missed my opportunity. So for the record, is, is this used for storage or retail sales?
It's, well, they store things in there, but the primary use is not storage, it is retail sales to people on the street.
Okay.
And just to reiterate, it's not up on the street anymore. It's been pushed back and can actually go back further than it is currently, which I believe that that's reflected on the pictures that I just provided.
I have a question also. As the guidelines state, it's not allowed to be hooked up to utilities, so are you confirming that there are no utilities?
Yeah, well, I think they have a, an extension cord that runs into the building when they, they operate a POS system, but it's not hooked up to electricity directly, nor is it hooked up to plumbing or anything of that nature. I'm sorry?
Gas.
No gas?
No.
Nothing of the sort. It literally is portable.
It seems that what we're facing here is more of a legal question than one for architects and, and other people that we have here. Metro Legal have a stance on this, interpretation?
I'd have to... I'd have to look at the guidelines for this district, and I haven't had a chance to. I'd be glad to look at them very quickly if you, if you'd like me to.
And I can provide a little more background while she's doing that. The information that was referenced is a handbook, and it's very general, and it's trying to cover information for all the different types of overlays. It's not the guidelines. So the portable information is based on outbuildings in residential neighborhoods. So for instance, in Belmont Hillsborough, it says the same thing, but it provides more information because it's part of the guidelines. And it talks about it being, you know, temporary and not hooked up to utilities and so forth. So there are no outbuildings in the commercial area. So again, that was general information for all the overlays. It was not a guideline.
Okay.
This is for the applicant, a question for the applicant, sir. What do you sell out of this building?
I think they primarily sell pizza.
And so they would have to have some sort of heating element?
Yeah, they, they use something, I assume. I actually can't say that for certain. I know they have a POS system in their meeting where they have to ring up the sales.
Right. It would seem that they would have to have something to...
They may, or they may just bring it in directly from the kitchen. It's not, it's not too far from the kitchen. I don't know for sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Robin is, sorry, Robin is telling me that it's at the beginning of the district guidelines, and so I would suggest that rather than me try to look at it very quickly, that if it's possible to defer this one meeting and then I can present a recommendation to you.
Before we do that, I have a couple of comments. The whole issue of portability and size and temporary portable foundation, et cetera, these guidelines, which we typically apply to outbuildings in residential districts, are clearly intended for garden sheds, not restaurants. I feel like this is a very creative attempt to find a loophole in what it is that we are here to protect, which is a historic 19th and early 20th century downtown commercial district that's the heart of Nashville. This thing looks like something in Gatlinburg, you know? It's, it doesn't follow the spirit or even the letter, I think, if we were to get into a legal analysis of our guidelines for the Broadway Historic Preservation District, which is a higher level of historic preservation standard than conservation overlays. So I'm not really inclined to defer, you know, and the issue of, it's been there a couple of years. Well, our staff and commission are overwhelmed with all kinds of stuff every month and things slip and don't, sometimes don't get found for a couple of years, so...
That is absolutely true.
Yeah.
But actually, in this case, we... But actually, in this case, we left a lot of violations for multiple properties on Broadway and Second Avenue alone for a short period of time, or for a long period of time, because of COVID, and because of the bomb, and because of vandalism, and, you know, everybody was just getting beat up so much.
Right.
We put all those aside for a while.
And with as much scrutiny as we put on ETMs, and some other little addition that was done without a permit recently, I mean, I feel like we're within our authority or purview to agree with the staff recommendation on this one for disapproval.
Right, and it is a violation.
Excuse me, for violation?
Yeah, it is a violation, so it's not really a project coming before us to say we approve it or disapprove it, it's a violation with no permit, so let's just be really clear on that as well, for the record. Yeah, yeah. Madam Chair? Yes. Yes.
I agree with Commissioner Price. I see two violations. If we see as a structure, you know, they violate creating structure without permit and does not meet guideline. And if we see this as a, same as hot dog stand, these hot dog stand, without waiting for our legal analysis, they are required to store inside of the building, not left outside on the street. So for that, I see two violations. So, yeah, clearly, I appreciate the creativity to divert the violation, but nonetheless, I think this is a violation.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Dearly noted. Anyone else, other than that, would make a motion?
Madam Chair, with regard to the staff recommendation at 105 Broadway, I recommend that we approve the staff recommendation.
Okay. There is a motion, is there a second? Second, Commissioner? All right, Commissioner Johnson made the second. All in favor of the motion? Okay. Any opposed? All right, no opposition, and so the motion passes. Thank you again, thank you again, applicant, for waiting till the very last one, so. Staff, thank you, as well. Robin, is there anything else we need to discuss?
There is nothing more, thank you.
Did she say something? No, nothing more. Okay. I don't think we have to vote on any kind of adjournment, but everybody have a good evening. Thank you for hanging in here all these hours. Thank you.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville dot go.